All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'm gonna first just apologize. We did a little executive session and it ran a little late, but we did the best we could. So, thanks for being patient. I'm calling the meeting to order. I can tell that I have everyone listening right now to me and everyone's all in order. So, I'll rise for Pledge Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unjas, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome, everyone. I guess it was a night to stand outside, right? It wasn't that bad out there, was it?
It was terrible.
Ryan had a nap. It was just unbelievable.
Got it. So, Ryan had a nap. Okay, there you go. All right, so the second item agenda is homeowners association and I see Jeff Wilson here from Briarcrest. Does Jeff have anything to bring forward to us?
Okay, thank you very much for inviting me. First of all, most things that I have been hearing the most, well, personally from the residents of Briarcrest is the operation of the Malt Farm. It's right there where everybody lives.
Oh, yes.
There's the noise in the morning, there's these large piles, many large is probably an understatement, they're dwell over the heights of some of the homes in there. The wind blows and all this dust blows into the people's homes, their windows. I know the Nissans have a pool out there and they said they can't use the pool in the summertime, it's covered with dust, all the furniture out there is covered with dust. And so, I have heard quite a bit of complaint about that from people. I know I've lived in Briarcrest long before that operation went into existence, but I know it's originally supposed to be an agricultural operation, so we thought it's a farm, you know? I don't know how it's morphed into what it's morphed into, but the operation has been growing over time and particularly this year, I've heard there's so much more complaints from people about it. And I know, I think they've expressed that too at probably two village meetings as well, I don't know. But that was, that was the main concern.
Can we stop that for a second too? Because I know that there's a little bit of a pass there, there was some legal action taken. Judge Attorney Filippini, can you comment on that? Because I did actually for the fire station, I walked the property and I drove by today and there is mountains of stuff there that wasn't there a few weeks ago. So, I don't know what happened, but I don't know what ability we have to regulate.
There was a prosecution, we weren't involved in it some time ago, and a number of the violations that were at the heart of the prosecution were found not to be in violation of the code. I don't know what the conditions are now and whether that might warrant a relook at the compliance there, but again, they were largely successful in the past prosecution against, or that a village had brought, but that does not dictate whether the current conditions would result in the same fate.
Okay, so we'll look into it, all right? Based on, that's what that means.
And secondly, I still hear questions from people about the fire station. I know the fire station's special use has been approved by the trustees and so, I'm gonna ask that. It's just the concern is that how will the trucks get out and get through the traffic on that statistic road because of, at certain times of the day, I mean, we'd go over there like four o'clock to make the turn to come down, to come down 83 and it's gridlocked the whole way. I've heard from people about that, concerned about that. And I know that's been expressed here before, but people brought it to my attention, so I felt like I had an obligation to also bring that up.
Thanks, Jeff, I appreciate that. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's all.
Thank you. Thanks for coming here tonight, appreciate it. And thanks for your service, too. Appreciate it. Anyone from Bridgewater Farms here? Bridgewater Farm, Dave Schumer? If not, it is time for public comment. Anyone have public comment? Go ahead.
First of all, thanks for listening, I appreciate it. I'm with the president of the Village of Long Grove, the Long Grove 53, 83, and 22. There are signs stating historical Long Grove downtown. These signs welcome visitors to shop and enjoy our village. You are trustees of the historic Village of Long Grove. There is a presumption that you, the trustees, are not only interested in running the village, but also supportive of our historic heritage and identity. That, this historic heritage is the reason to bring people to Long Grove to spend their money, to provide revenue to run our government. The more visitors and money spent, the more revenue for the village. The villagers intend to take the expanded village hall over the footprint of the historic Ruth Barn. This barn was received by the Historic Society as a donation. The Historic Society paid for the move and has maintained and preserved the building for the past forty years. Many times in the past months, I sought out Greg Jackson asking for the Historic Society to be part of the planning process for the move. Each time, I was told, quote, "It's not time for you to be at the table," unquote. I attended numerous board meetings about the planned renovation, but there were no specifics about moving Ruth's barn. On August 3rd, it came to the Historic Society's attention that there would be a vote up and I supported to move the Ruth Barn back to the Archer School. The Historic Society has not been part of that decision-making process. I received numerous emails from Art all in the last week with documents including meetings and studies done in regards to moving the barn. One document was minutes from the, quote, "Village Hall Working Group Report." I've never heard of a group and we feel that we should have been, but we're not part of the vast planning process or information. In the documents, there's a statement that September 30th was the deadline to choose the downtown location and it has passed. This deadline occurred before we even knew a vote was coming up or what the plan was. It also occurred before the village had conducted their preliminary feasibility report for the Historic Society determined if the barn and the roof house could be placed on the farmhouse property. No decision has been made by September 30th. There was also noted in the minutes, title search not yet completed, but absent legal documentation of contrary structures on village property become village property. It appears that the village is now looking to take possession of the Ruth Barn and just has us concerned. Once the barn is moved by Art, over by Archer's School and the expansion occurs, there will be minimal options to move either building out. And why move the building twice? Why not rethink this or work liberatively to make one move to simple possible? In previous board meetings, there was a discussion to allow the Historic Society to use the village allotted money for the move to the simple location. We are still hoping this could be an option. The Historic Society is in the process of applying for a matching state grant to help fund the move. We've been working closely with the HDGBA since it was Ryan, thank you, that made us aware of the grant in first place. The village E newsletter connection, it was purported that, quote, "Our team is working closely with the Architect, Army Corps of Village Engineer, and the Long Grove Historic Society to retain the old world feel of the structure and historic buildings." We have not seen this working closely with or any collaboration between the village and Historic Society. Many of the two groups are senior citizens. If the Ruth Barn is placed with a village plan, it will be inaccessible for those seniors. Walking through grass to a rabbit's door will be a deterrent for many of those who would like to build, use barn. The buildings, buildings will not be placed, will be placed well out of sight from the street and even from the village parking lot. The buildings most likely will be minimally used at all in that location. Moving all the buildings to a simple location will create campus with more buildings and interest and a venue for our audience and a draw for visitors. It will enable us to have all the buildings open for tours and increase programming to highlight our historic village. Going forward, we would like to do a reset on how working closely together looks. The Historic Society needs to attend a meeting to review the decision-making process. We are all, we all want the same thing, to bring more visitors to Long Grove, to shop, eat, and enjoy our village. The historic character of Village of Long Grove is what gives our identity to the public. This is a unique once-in-a-lifetime chance to put truly, to put together a truly remarkable tourist spending that will benefit the downtown businesses and the village. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Go ahead, Ryan.
Hello, I appreciate letting me have a few moments. I'm speaking as behalf of the downtown, I've got two comments to make. First, as part of the E Society, again, we think this is a big value to the community. We are a historic town, I think there's a lot to offer from the tourism side of it. I do think the grant they're applying for will have some significant value to where we can get approval. And us working as a community to try to figure out how we can, will provide all this, a lot of E's, how we can move these buildings into the downtown. So, we definitely, the downtown support it, we hope it can happen. I think there's a lot of tourism opportunities there, which will generate tax dollars to stay with the village. So, I hope that you guys can work with them, try to figure out a solution where we can all come together and say, how do we make it work? How do we find funding? And how do we come to a conclusion so that it meets the timeline due to have at the village to complete your project here as well? So, again, that's where the downtown fans as far as this topic. Secondary, I just want you guys aware, tomorrow's our kickoff for the holidays. I hope everyone can come into the downtown, enjoy it. We've got some amazing decorations. And again, it's all this community together that puts these organizations and these activities on, such as you guys are trying to do. It's all us together that represents Long Grove, so thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw everything coming in today, it was very early.
Angie Underwood?
Yeah, I'd like to make a public comment. My name is Angie Underwood, for those of you who don't know me. I support the efforts of this current village board to find a new village hall solution to provide needed space for the staff and to upgrade and modernize the facilities. This is a strategic goal of the village, of the village board during my tenure and the lack of funding was always the hurdle. Now that the grants have been made available, the opportunity is at hand. Moving the Ruth Barn and the Archer School to the farmhouse property to create a historic campus has also been a long-term wish of the Long Grove Historic Society since I joined that board in 1999. The cost of this has always been prohibitive, even though this would greatly enhance the ability to stack the historic buildings and provide programming that would encourage economic development in the entire downtown. However, another opportunity is now at hand and with the need to relocate Ruth's barn due to proposed village hall expansion and a fund earmarked to move the barn. Moving the barn temporarily behind the creek and behind the new construction will certainly make it much harder to relocate it once more in the future. The barn was originally moved from an old farm site that was being redeveloped into the Three Lakes subdivision. Residents who were instrumental in saving the structure for future generations were, among many, Tony Burr, who was a resident but also active in his capacity as village manager at the time, Bob and Denny Coffin, Mary Jo Wester, and Mark Turner. The residents of Long Grove today know these familiar namesakes of roads, bridges, and open spaces. We should continue to do our best to honor their vision and our heritage. The historic Ruth Barn is not a problem, or an eyesore, or something that is merely in the way. It's a treasure from our past and it should be treated with respect. Please consider a decision to work collaboratively and with the spirit of trust alongside the other community groups who would like to see the village hall expanded and the historic structures relocated. By working together, we can all be proud of accomplishing a project that the entire community, governmental, civic, residential, and business can benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm from Country Club, Country Club subdivision. So, we've had an issue with installing block cameras there because of the, this whole situation that's been in our neighborhood and we're kind of confused. We have majority of people, probably five hours, six to go to get the cameras in. And according to our president of our association, he said, Mr. Borowski, I guess he's like one of the main opponents of this whole thing, he said that history of our crime in Long Grove is mostly cars that are stolen, used, and dumped before residents, even before residents even wake up, usually because key fobs are left in cars and doors unlocked and fobs hanging too close to the cars, na, na, na. So, I've been living here for about three years and in three years, I had a cop pretty much after a couple of months knocking on my door, asking if my security cameras were on to see because across from me, the perpetrators lured the people out of the house and then while pretense of Comcast or something like that, the other group went in and robbed the house. Then a house diagonally of me, there's a house that I don't, we've broken into from behind, they loaded, stopped in their car and hauled it away. Then our president's house, our situation got, the people were knocking on my door and were trying to get in and thankfully, well, thankfully, maybe not thankfully, his wife was in the car in the house and she started yelling and the guy, the president was not so far away, yes, she called him and he pulled in, the guy in the car was in a mask, said that he was there to perform some kind of work and then escaped going all the long and my cameras, all they were able to catch is him chasing the other car. So, all these things don't sound like they're car problems. I mean, I understand what Mr. Borowski's coming from, I mean, I understand there's a constitution, there's the fourth amendment of privacy and things like that, but I don't think they're gonna matter and we're all gonna get hurt or dead. So, I'm trying to see if you guys can somehow push this forward and so we can install those things because they're beneficial for all of us. And with all the things going around the world, who knows what else we might be expecting it to happen? I mean, I was there, I was there with my kid when there's a car with tinted windows almost hit me when I was on the bicycle with my child. There was some kind of a shooting going on, or so I heard that they, at the Chakkar and the, and the Home Grove Street, the Country Club, okay? So, I saw the police activity there and then I saw a woman being concerned with all the crazy driving going on there and she was standing there with a phone recording the things happening around the area and then called the police and there was police after that. So, she's allowed to stand there and record, it's public recording going on anyway. I mean, I understand that maybe the clause of the law, security cameras is not exactly proficient, maybe we can tweak it somehow and make it, make it acceptable for us, but those are, those are needed for us. I mean, there's crazy stuff going on there all the time.
Thank you for your comment. Do you want to respond at all or?
No, I think we, the, it's been an issue before, it's come in front of the board before and there's been an issue with privacy concerns and there's also an issue with the safety concerns. So, it's one of those issues that the question is gonna have to be worked out with the village board as to which direction, if any, they want to take with this. The homeowners association probably would be helpful if they presented a list of, or a description of exactly what they want and why and come and present it to the board.
When does this more thing happen?
Second and fourth Tuesday of every month.
Second, third Tuesday of every month.
Fourth.
Second, fourth Tuesday of every month.
You want to get on the agenda? All right, thank you. Any other?
Well, I'll get your name for the minute.
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, you were chair, well, I'm chair, I say chair, so it's in Country Club.
Yeah, I wanted to just comment.
Well, so, can I hold you one second, Aaron raises his hand first?
Right. I'm not really speaking for any group, just speaking for myself here as a resident. Regarding the barn, my end in mind is first and foremost that it be preserved. Secondly, that it be preserved in a way that exposes it to as many residents as we can. I think that the downtown location does that better than where it is now on this property. But if you ask me to choose whether I would rather have it on this property or not have it anywhere at all, I'd say I'll take it on this property. So, preservation first and foremost. The village hall definitely needs updating, I mean, I've seen this over the years and I think it's fantastic that you found some grant money and I wouldn't expect you to act in any other way that would see that money not being used. No, no issue, great. As residents, I would imagine that we both care about both of these things. Like, I'm sure you guys all would like to see the barn used more as we would and I, we would like to see the, or I would like to see the village hall updated as you. So, I think we're all in vital agreement on it. Regarding the ownership of the properties, this building, the barn, and the schoolhouse that seems to have come up recently, I can tell you as a historian that it's reverberating and there's a long paper trail with regards to that. I don't know that I care that much, to be honest with you, because let's just take the barn as an example. I don't really care who owns it as long as it's open, it's preserved, and it's open and available to the public. That's the most important thing to me. So, what am I asking y'all to do? Keep an open mind, be creative and flexible towards our mutual end goals. This project that looks like it's gonna unfold a certain way, it's gonna take twists and turns. There'll be doors open that we didn't expect, there'll be doors closed, or, you know, maybe doors closed. There'll be doors appear where we didn't expect them. And which? Who would have thought that there would have been a giant truck hitting the bridge in place that should have borne the ball in getting it restored? To be thoughtful and creative.
Thank you for those comments, appreciate it. Mr. Kopecky?
Well, I just wanted to, what I've noticed in this room is a lot of people volunteer for no pay and I want to thank you all for doing what you do. I'm in the Long Grove Lions Club for forty years now and I'm also on the merchant board. But I just think that everything that we do in this town does matter and I think we all do a good job of it. So, keep on doing it and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, John, thanks for being here. Go ahead, Benjamin.
Hi, I'm Benjamin Nasty from the Oakley Homeowners Association, 22. I just have two comments. The first comment is, only 23, I'm sorry, only 22, which runs in front of my subdivision, the gravel shoulders have just totally washed out and I know Assistant Manager McCarthy here has been trying to work with IDOT. I understand it's an IDOT road, it's not a village road, but if, you know, we can really push IDOT to do something because it seems like this district manager is not really taking our village too seriously. And if you drive along 22, you'll see there's these huge ruts on the side of 22 and you're in front of my homeowners association, there's these big potholes where our road meets the road and, you know, we could use some help. Because they used to do it every summer, just put some gravel out there and, you know, probably solve it. I don't know, for the last two years, they haven't been out. And my second issue is about the village hall. I just think we should keep our options open about old fire station, one in there that becomes available, because that might be the ideal village hall since it's already been modernized and it's right in the city. So, but at the same time, you know, again, this is the most cost supportable way, so be it.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Oh, go ahead, yes.
Good evening. My name is Jean Sylvester, for those of you who may not know me, I'm the Chair of the Architectural Commission and Historic Preservation Commission. I share the sentiments that were expressed by Jane from Historic Society in the sense that I believe the Architectural Commission and Historic Preservation Commission should have been part of this discussion as well. The Architectural Board is charged with responsibility for reviewing applications for building permits in the downtown business district and all architectural plans for construction within the historic downtown district. And I will just remind everyone, the findings that the village made when they created the Historic Preservation Commission include developments and shifts in populations and changes in land use, threatened and destruction of structures, sites, districts, and objects having historic and aesthetic value and interest. And preservation and continued utilization are necessary to enhance the life of residents and visitors to Long Grove. Long Grove contains structures and areas that embody a sense of time and place unique to the village or which exemplify or reflect cultural, social, economic, political, or architectural history of Long Grove. And the protection of the historic and architectural character and resources of the village is necessary for the promotion and maintenance of its economic development. The Historic Preservation Commission is charged with the responsibility of advising the Board of Trustees about historic and architectural matters. And I feel that it will permit not to have, not presented to us, asked of. We have members who have expertise in this area and I believe it would have been who the village to have talked to us. Going forward, we are more than happy to be involved in this process. Involved in the process, that means the State Historic Preservation Office, maybe the Army Corps of Engineers, this is a complicated process, we are happy to help, but I can believe that we should be part of that.
Jean, thanks for your comments, appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, meeting's adjourned. No, go ahead, Bonnie.
I'd like to step away from the board and speak as a resident and as a citizen, and I feel that speaking this way will be far more effective than the, the methods used on the village board. There's a traffic problem in downtown Long Grove. You may not know it. It's always been there. It is getting worse and worse and worse and it will continue to be worse. I have an idea which I approached with Jeff and that is that Archer lot sits day after day after day half-empty. And why? Because it is physically uncomfortable to use it for a walker to walk to their car. If we took the corner of Archer and Robert Parker Coffin and put a path through that firm, instead of people leaving town because they can't find parking, they can park their car, walk through a pathway, and get into town. I, I don't know if there's anything in that firm which would prevent that from being done, but if not, I think it would be a very practical thing for this town to do. And I, and I request that the village do it on behalf of the business owners certainly and the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Trustee O'Reilly. Any other public comments?
I'm trying to understand the geography of what you said.
Okay, Archer. Robert Parker Coffin.
Looking at, yeah.
It's a corner.
Yeah.
Take the very tip of the corner.
Northwest?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, okay.
It's kind of back through into the parking lot.
To find out how much that's gonna cost? Bring it forward.
Oh, well, God knows, we can't do anything practical that might cost us money because we sure can't vote on these things.
No, I said we should find out and bring it forward, is what I said, Bobby. I was supporting you, so you know.
Thank you, thank you.
That was a support, not a, not a no.
Wow, I've seen where we've been.
No, I said we should find out what it costs and bring it forward, yes? And Jeff can do that for us, right? Okay, perfect. All right, do we have any public safety folks here? Oh, Keith, you're not in your uniform.
We didn't even recognize you.
You got guns still, though.
Yeah.
Oh, you're not supposed to bring those in.
I didn't have one before, but I will put it out there that I could probably have a contact from block come and give a presentation to the village board next year to get through the holidays, if that's something that you guys want to, we know they connect you.
Thank you.
Talk about the system and all the capability.
Chris talked to him for an hour on the phone the other night, by 4:00, so.
Do you recall?
I'll miss that one, I know.
Who was the board? Do you remember?
There were three, three against.
Okay, because I changed my mouth.
Okay.
Just a tip off.
Okay. Well, something we may be able to bring back before the board. All right, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Thanks for being here, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you. All right, then, nobody else online? Anyone online? Nope. All right, let's move along to the consent agenda.
Let's remove number seven.
All right, well, remove number seven, so there's two items in the consent agenda. That would be approval of the October 2023 bill warrant and approval of meeting minutes from the October 24th, 2023 meeting, subject to non-sustantative revisions.
We did great, or keep going?
Something just left, all right.
We filled the board.
So, go ahead, make, basically, somebody want to commit a motion? Moved by Trustee Tenucci?
Aye.
Second by Trustee O'Reilly?
Trustee Tenucci.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
All right, I guess we can wait a second, or motion, did I?
Motion passed.
Motion passed, okay, motion passed, we'll leave it there, all right. So, now we want to talk about item seven separately. You asked for it to be removed, it's, we can still vote on it, so.
Yeah, I just wanted some discussion.
Yeah, I, I just wanted some discussion on number seven, because it again is a very specific holiday embellishment for a very specific reason, region within the village. Yeah, I think if we're spending money on holiday decorations, you know, the money we spend should be, I hate using it, I won't say it, should be equitably distributed, equally distributed amongst the other business areas within the village as a whole. You know, this is very specific to a parking lot, but how about twenty-two and Old McHenry, how about the north end of town, how about even just Christmas decorations up and down eighty-three? You know, I, I think if we're gonna spend money, let's have a more comprehensive, holistic look at how we want to do that on holiday decorations. I think this is very specific for a very limited portion of the village, Jen, if we're gonna spend X number of dollars, let's put a budget in place to do the whole village, or not do any of the village, or at least share the wealth, if you will. That's, that's all I really wanted to say, I, I think, I don't know how many people are gonna vote yes on this one, but, you know, going forward, I'd like to see the entire village have some amount of the money spread around it, is all I'm trying to say.
No, we had the same concept.
We did, and we're, we're sure here.
We, we covered other holidays that should be considered, and we were gonna put something in the budget, and we were gonna talk about it.
And here we are, and here we are again. It's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, but. But everybody else, right?
It was a beautiful addition, but you're right.
My recollection last year was that they were gonna be candlelight in the tree, that was the description, and they weren't candlelight, and when I saw what five thousand dollars was, basically, I sounded very disappointed. I guess I noticed on this invoice, there's a separate charge for the post lamps versus, obviously, the trees are more expensive, to, to most of them, but what?
No, Ryan wants to make a comment, so, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
I don't mean to, I don't want to interrupt you, though, so.
So have any, a company come out and decorate the town? To do a, to do this in our town, what we do, would cost an excess of probably between seventy and eighty thousand dollars. We as a downtown, with our downtown support, it costs us about twenty thousand through a company, then additionally to the labor of the downtown. This is where thousands of people, not just in Long Grove, but throughout all communities, come to downtown, to shop, to enjoy their, the festival, whether through having, coming out for Santa, coming out for carolers, coming out to our shops, our restaurants, in, in most afternoon and evening. Most communities supply this to villages and through the downtown. We have not asked for dollars in the downtown, that feels really the first day that we've asked the village to help support it, because it is very expensive. And, and again, it's a very small, tiny scale from, from the budget in the downtown that we spend. I think when you look at, Chris, to the point where you're saying, spread it out throughout the town, I think you also have to look at, where do our people come in to look for lights and look for festival activities? While you do have other areas that will come to, come into an area and leave because they're going to one store, people come into the downtown to spend the day, to spend the evening. So I think we're adding value to the town, because people are coming here to spend the day here. It's not just coming to get a cup of coffee, or going to the grocery store, it's coming to see what Long Grove has to offer above the change we've got. That's all I ask, again, we spend a lot of time in, in, in what we do, for no, no revenue, you know, whether it's myself or other board members, and not just that, we have residents, and we have other folks that will come out and say, hey, I'm willing to come climb a ladder and hang lights. You give a kind of, the poles that are all lighted, lit to the whole downtown, that would be ten thousand dollars, they have a third party dealer there. For us, it's two days and lunch.
And cookies.
And cookies.
There were some shots involved.
But again.
That explains a couple of them.
God, it's open. What I, I think as a town, I need to really understand, having a company to decorate lights, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. When we do it, it's hundreds of dollars. So please keep that in context when you look for this.
Did we lose money in the budget, Taylor?
Well, I was, I'm, I'm sorry, I was in the bathroom, I apologize, but, um, I don't know what was transpired, I think I heard not all downtown.
Yeah, that was it. No, I, I, you know, I, I get this, understand it, completely understand what you're saying, I get it, but if we're looking at putting money into the municipal, into the downtown again, why aren't we looking at money and putting it at other shopping areas within the district? The entrances, the village, Long Avenue Three, along whatever.
So I, I happen to, I, I, number one, I'm hugely in favor of it, I think we should be doing, I think just like a streetscape, that, you know, like, nice trash cans and things, we should be decorating for holidays. I also think we should be having the entrances, and I do think we should be putting this more proactively in our budget. It has not been a budgeted item, we should do it more proactively, rather than sitting here feeling like we've got a gun to our head on November sixteenth, but, and I'm appreciative, you know, I don't know, but you, you, you get all these postcards in the mail that people, you know, are happy to take twenty-five thousand dollars to hang your lights outside, but, so, I mean, I, you know, I, I just, I don't, I don't like doing it on our heels on November sixteenth, I think we should just budget and say, this is what we do for our, our village. And I do think we should be marking our entrances better. I don't know that Stone Lake Road is gonna be the place we hang our lights.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not thinking about that.
We don't do Lake County.
No, I didn't, I didn't read that.
We don't have a twenty-two.
Shopping, snarky, shopping, snarky, shopping, snarky.
But the entrance type would be nice.
Shopping, snarky.
But I agree, the entrance would be nice, you know, eighty-five.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to add, or do you want to make a?
Yeah, we should budget for this for the future, so we're not doing it in the middle of November.
No.
We, we have money.
But we'd not put it as a line item, and we should.
We were supposed to.
We should.
It was supposed to. No, from last year, we decided, we should budget this, so that we don't have to do this at the last minute.
So we will in the coming year. And we won't do that, fully, certainly do.
All right, so you want to make a motion?
And we should, and we, and we should say thank you for the people who did the shots.
Thank you to the people who did the shots, no, no, a motion to approve, second? Second by Trustee O'Reilly, so Trustee Tanucci?
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye, next time anybody gets a shot, so I'll.
Aye, Trustee O'Reilly.
We're good, yeah, tomorrow. No, we gotta go, we're gonna run.
I can see. Trustee Chris Taylor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
My wife's side of the town.
All right, motion, motion carried.
So for downtown, we, we have an open house tomorrow, it's your day, I hope everyone can come out and enjoy. We've got Santa's rolling, we've got lights being done, we've got the.
We're gonna have a wrench.
Again, just, just enjoy our community, I hope everyone can attend and, and just enjoy what we're all about.
Thank you, thanks for doing what you do. Thank you, everyone. All right, so, we're gonna move right along, the next item on the agenda is, yeah, I know, I know, is the Village Planner's Report, delivered by Taylor, and I'm not gonna pronounce your last name, because I'm gonna mess it up, but Taylor, can you give us the report?
Yeah, no worries, good evening, everyone. This week's Planner's Report, we had a regularly scheduled Plan Commission and Zoning Board Appeals Meeting for November seventh, that was canceled due to a lack of agenda items. We do have a Architectural Commission meeting this upcoming Monday, November twentieth. There are two items on the agenda for that meeting. The first item is a sign permit application for CL of Long Grove. You'll recall, this is formerly the Harbor Chase Assisted Living Facility there at the intersection of Old McHenry Road and Route eighty-three. It is a, essentially a reface of the existing two monument signs towards the entrances, and then a replacement of the text at the larger monument sign there towards the intersection of Old McHenry and Route eighty-three. We understand that this is a new ownership group, as of this last year, and so that'll be on the agenda here for the upcoming meeting. There's also a item here, a little more unusual of an item, this is kind of a preliminary look by the Architectural Commission on the Deer Trails subdivision. There's currently an inquiring party, a developer called McNauton Development, who are looking at picking up this subdivision, which has not yet been developed, and they are looking to do a, a palette of homes, if you will, certain floor plans and certain exterior designs that their future customers could then pick and choose from. It's anticipated that this would be not up to the anti-monotony standards, and so, because one of the bodies that would review those plans is the Architectural Commission, we felt it would be appropriate for that body, being that they are, if you will, are architectural experts in town, and can give specific advice and recommendations regarding the design of the exteriors of these proposed dwellings, that it would be appropriate for them just to kind of weigh in, provide feedback to this development group, essentially letting them know if this is gonna meet the benchmark here for Long Grove, or if they should reconsider their options. So that's what we have on the agenda for mon-
Taylor, is your question?
Can I make a few questions to clarify? Is this a public meeting that's going to occur?
Yes, this is a public meeting, it is not a public hearing, but a public meeting, yes.
Okay.
So it'll be seven PM, Long Grove Village Hall.
Yeah, no, I, I just didn't want them going off by themselves, rendering an opinion of, on something. As long as they're together and they're in the public, and the public is aware that they're meeting, then I'm fine.
I was just trying to, I, I thought several years ago, we went through some of this already.
We did, you, you may recall, we had both the Karen's Corner and the Deer Trail came in, in parallel tracks, both of them got approved, and they were complementary, though not identical developments. Neither of them proceeded to the point of development. And so, that's where we are, we have, we have no development.
There was one, though, that gave us a boatload of, like, facade ideas.
Yes, that was, that was for Deer Trail.
Okay, that was for Deer Trail.
And, and he is not pursuing it.
Okay.
No, this is, this is.
This is for Deer Trail, okay.
Deer Trail, yeah, that's for the one that gave us all the facades, yes.
Yeah.
So, so facade still available?
So why are we doing this?
No, I think they sold the property, or.
The, um, the, the designs and the like that, that, that he wanted to do, that Rick Swanson wanted to do, apparently are not what this new developer is looking to do.
Okay.
That's correct.
Got it, okay.
So are they kind of starting from scratch?
My, my guess is that there are probab-, I, I haven't seen any of it, so I don't know, my guess is that there's going to be some similarity conceptually, because the lots themselves are gonna dictate how the, the homes are gonna be oriented on it, but they have different ideas in terms of maybe facades, materials, and like, that's what's gonna be presented to the, to the architect, if I understood the, the report.
That's correct, we.
Facade.
Say what?
Do you know, we did.
No.
Because they were not custom homes, it was a subdivision.
We basically.
Okay, so the, so the Plan Commission can't go back and look at those, so, those are mean nothing.
We approved the PUD.
At some point, if this developer wants to move forward with that, they're gonna probably be seeking an amendment to the PUD that was approved however many years ago, and that will go to the Plan Commission and ultimately come to the Village Board.
But they're asking for directions, and if.
I think that they're testing, you know, toe in the water kind of thing.
Well, I'm wondering if they know what we want.
We want anti-monotony.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, our, our regulations are in place, and we have, we had standards in the Deer Trail PUD, so they know that, they have those documents, and, you know, again, I don't know what they intend to present, it may be something that is consistent with the anti-monotony, it may be, you know, our anti-monotony code is not, you know, can't be, it has to be a completely separate building, that's not quite how it is, we do have some spacing requirements, we do have some variability requirements in terms of home to home, I don't know where they are in terms of that, but that's what they want to investigate with the Architectural Committee.
So we're heading into an adventure?
Always.
They, they don't not, their, their plans do not meet the anti-monotony code, and that's why they're coming to the AC to hear.
What is the anti-monotony?
They're, 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 they're not meeting that code, so they have to find out.
So they may be seeking some ultimate relief from the, from the Village Board, but before they go that far, I think they're looking to get some feedback from the architect.
All right, Taylor, keep us moving. Bring it forward.
Yeah, the only other thing I have to add is, since the publication here of my Planner's Report for this week, the Plan Commission meeting for November twenty-first has been canceled as well for a, due, or due to a lack of agenda items, so that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report, thanks, Taylor. I'm gonna keep us moving, discussion and consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number zero-two-zero dash zero dash two-seven, granting a temporary use for a dog daycare boarding, grooming, and training facility at twenty-seven twenty-seven, Illinois Route fifty-three. Any discussion, or somebody want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, moved by Trustee Tanucci.
Just extending dates, right?
Yeah, just extending the dates.
Second.
Second by Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Village Engineers Report.
Okay, Engineers Report, I'll highlight a few things. First off, we get two construction projects, number one was the tenant subdivision, we have said, real drainage improvement, the work is substantially complete at this point, so we just get a few punchline items and restoration to do up there. And then the other construction project was the road program, that's number three on the Engineers Report, that is also substantially complete, and hearing good things about the work that Peter Baker did, so we've still got a few things to do. One of, is notable in the downtown, they've still got the third blockways at the corner of Archer Road, to get those done, so.
Every corner's dark.
Will we make sure for tomorrow, we have safety up on there, so that, because we've got a lot of residents in downtown tomorrow, can we just make sure we have adequate safety or cones up, just so that people all come from the lots, because as we have the open house, it's going to be very similar to our, our ghost, ghost walk, we have a lot of people in town, just, it's darker, you can't see things as well.
Talk to me tomorrow, and I'll get Eli out there to.
Perfect. What time does, what do we start tomorrow? If you need cones, we got a lot of cones, too, Lions Club.
My neighbor keeps putting them on my road, he doesn't have an inlet to fly.
Okay, the, one item that I, that's between those two is number two on the Engineers Report, this is the Lake Michigan Water Connection. As you may recall, this is being earmarked in the federal budget by Congresswoman Shetelsky's office. Federal budget hasn't been approved, but talking with their office, still in the budget, so we'll see what the budget looks like once it gets passed, they think that'll be towards the end of the year. And then the other information that I found out, once the budget is approved, and this is the grant, or the agreement, that takes some time, going through this process, probably about nine months, and then the funding for the Lake Michigan Connection is a reimbursement program, which means, you know, we don't work and start until that agreement is signed, so it's a little ways, little ways off, first step being the federal budget being passed.
Does your office have the experience and skills to go through that kind of grant
We have not done this one, yet with them, so I was told it's not a, it's a lengthy process in terms of, you know, it's gotta go through a bunch of sets of hands, but not necessarily typical.
Okay, I was wondering if there's anything, I mean, that's an important, big ticket item, or, you know, is there anything we could do to be prepared as best we can?
So I've got, I think his name is Andrew, I've got his cell number in Washington, so I'll be in contact with him, kind of keeping tabs on everything. I'll yield discussion on the village hall expansion, and then the other, the other thing is the Apptecisic Road project is well underway by Lake County Division of Transportation, they're, they're out there in the last week or two, actually, doing some paving installation, so with that, I believe the window is closed to open cut Apptecisic Road to put a water, water main sleeve in, so, you know, alternative now is, the option is to pour that sleeve under Apptecisic Road when that water main gets put in, this is the extension that will first go to the. This is the extension that will first go to the fire department property and then would also be, uh, the connection that would be available to extend further north, depending on what future may hold on that.
So if the fire department wants that extension, okay, so, since the sweep is amended, they have to take it-
Uh, the, the whole water main project and the, not, I don't think anything was signed, you know, or any, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was going to be, you know, there was, you know, get it in there, but then the fire department reimbursed the village for it. That was the concept bones for the agreement, but it was never-
The, the ordinance that the board approved calls for the water main extension, it's at the nickel of the fire department, but it would be subject to a recapture agreement so that they would be able to share that cost with others who might use it. And they, they were going to be, uh, conceptually, this, this is the part that Jeff was just referring to, conceptually to avoid having their engineer design it and oversee it and then having, uh, Gaywalt Hamilton review that. It was going to be, uh, spearheaded through Gaywalt Hamilton, according to one layer of review.
And, and this board would, would take the decision on the size of, because we, we talked it-
There, there still had not been, right, we still had not gotten the information from the fire department as to some of the demands that they were going to have. I think that's something that they would then feed to Jeff and Jeff would then make some evaluation as to what would be an appropriate size to recommend to the board.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking big picture.
That's right there.
And I'm thinking fire, I'm thinking big picture.
No, I, I understand that and I think that that's, you know, again, the, the starting point, it's going to have to come back to the board.
Yeah, and clearly we need to know what the fire department needs and then go beyond that.
Keep us moving.
Those were the, the major highlights. There's a number of other things in there, permits and things of that nature, but if there's any, if there's any questions, there's, uh, if you can.
I have, I have a question. I noticed on the Riley Parker Crofton and Long Grove Route 53, it's shiny and new and the, the yellow markers are vibrant. And then when you get to the old road or older road, those yellow markers are almost invisible on, on, I noticed on both connectors, in Winter's Coming and so and all that. Is there, can we have those, um, the, the yellow stripes renewed on those roads? Just because it goes from super, super brilliant to almost invisible.
Couple shots for John with your remote.
We could do that tomorrow. And they can change color.
Do you want yellow or green or red?
So, I mean, can it be done, yes, um, the safe specs for, or, or, um, painting lines, you know, is cut off is November 1st and it's going to be 50 degrees, so, um, weatherwise, you know, sometimes in December you get that, um, so, I mean, we can get it.
Yeah, but it's so thin.
Correct. Yep, I know. So I could get, uh, a price to do that and turn it back to the board for approval and we, uh, it could be, it would need to be weather dependent, whether they'd be able to do that this year. Think of your lines, the, whatever did this temple lot, you know, where they last year they put down the blue for the, in the health and safety area for the-
It's for the buses, yeah.
It, it, it's already scraped away, it's, it's gone. What they fixed is already damaged again. So I don't know what material they're using, but it's, it's not holding out past eight months. Is it just the blue? Yeah. Same to the analyzer.
Okay.
What's the material they're using now? Because obviously they would have done all that at the same time, it's just, it's not holding to the, to the light I think of it. It's just, I don't think it bonded and when the plow's hit, it just took it away.
All right, I'm going to keep us moving. Um, we're going to get that estimate. If there's no other questions, we're going to move to the topic everyone's been waiting for. Discussion and consideration on relocation of the Ruth Barn. Kent, are you going to start us out?
Yeah, I'll start. So I'd just like to say a couple of things, first of all, um, the village board definitely desires to preserve the Ruth Barn. There's no appetite to do anything other than preserve it. I just want to leave that to rest right now. Also, the village board desires to support the historical society's wishes to move the barn and perhaps even the school over to the historical society campus. So in furtherance of that desire, we authorized money the last time we met, for Jeff and his company to prepare a feasibility study, which I believe was shared with the historical society. So I'd just like to share some highlights from that feasibility study. Um, and it says, while moving the barn and the school is possible, there are many items will require further evaluation and approval. And a few of these items are, I'll just get just eye leveling somewhere. Two of the items that need to be looked at are, of course relocating it to the historical society property includes moving the structure through the downtown, which has overhead utilities, so to work with utility companies to move those logs and put the barn through there. The required wetland buffer on the historical society property is 50 feet, so a variance will be required from the WTO and it also needs to be approved by both the village board and the Lake County Stormwater Council Commission. Also, the conservancy district line is not clear per the provided records and will need to be accurately shown to confirm the 20-foot buffer. Pre-removal, including species, condition, size and number of trees to be removed, should be consulted with the village forester to determine what's involved there. The buildings as presently shown also have minimal separation between each other, so the building department will need to evaluate this condition to determine code compliance. And the building department should review all applicable zoning codes prior to a final plan. And in fact, Taylor has responded, and he gave several details, so the approval process would look like an architectural commission review, to make a petition to the PCZVA for PCZVA, for a PUD major amendment as well as a tax amendment. On the staff review, schedule a PCZVA hearing, sending out notices, having a public hearing, making a recommendation, having the village board review and a building firm. So many steps in order to achieve that. Also, the plan does not include modification of the existing septic system. If it is desired to connect to a sewer line instead, the sewer line here is the historical society property. The engineer's opinion of possible cost is about $70,000 to connect to that sewer line. Um, also, the site soils in the area of the existing septic system need to be evaluated for appropriate footing or foundation to be designed and soil boardings were not completed as part of the visiting area. Also, the parceling question is part of the whole planned unit development. Moving the Ruth Barn and Archer School to the downtown site next to the farmhouse would require amending the Red Oaks PUD. So you can see there are many, many, many steps that need to be completed to determine if the barn and the school even can be moved over there. And these steps take time. So we are proposing a schedule which will simultaneously further the wishes of the historical society to move those historical structures to the historical society campus, while simultaneously allowing the village hall construction and renovation to move forward. And it's short, I'll read it quickly. So fourth quarter this year, the historical society applies for grants, permits, zoning waivers and preparation for moving the barn and the school to the campus. In other words, to the historical society campus. In other words, gets the ball rolling and all the things I just talked about, as well as any grants they wish to apply for, health coverage costs. The village will apply for permits, obtain bids and hire a contractor to relocate the Ruth Barn next to the Archer School and Village Hall property. So by doing this, the date of the Ruth Barn's permanent move to the historical society campus will be decoupled from the village hall construction schedule, so they can both proceed, neither one dependent on the other. First quarter next year, the historical society raises funds and continues all grant permit zoning and other efforts in preparation for moving the barn and the school to the historical society campus, which again, the village supports, you doing it. Also in the first quarter, the village relocates the Ruth Barn next to the Archer School by Village Hall property. This will ensure the barn remains safe, secure and undamaged during the village hall construction activities and while waiting its final move to the historical society campus. And by the way, as part of that move, we'll shore up the building, reinforce it, we can keep those reinforcements in place, I believe we still can, right? We're going to take that off. It'll make it much easier to then move it to its final destination when the time comes. And then, you know, whenever that happens, once we get all these things that I listed done and the historical society is ready to accept the buildings, then we got them. They're all yours. So that's what we're proposing. This will allow the historical society to meet its goals and allow us to meet our goals with village hall construction and renovation.
You can ask, Jane, go ahead, yes.
I think one of our concerns is that if you move it over, over by Archer School and you continue construction, you're going to cut down on access for us to get them up.
No, because the access is not through there, the access is through there and there's no construction activity over there. So that's not an issue.
The bridge?
No, it would be beside, it would be beside the bridge, so basically this roadway extended, you know, instead of jogging over to the bridge, just take it this way and go up. Basically this road shoots straight to Archer School, right side of it.
Doing it this way loses your contribution towards our moving it, number one. Number two, have you done this back when you were originally considering this? We could have done that list now.
So if you had desired to move those two buildings, you could have done them at any time, independent of village hall reconstruction.
But not with $50,000 from the village? And that makes a big difference.
Same thing as with the bridge.
But remember, all those other things I read, if any one of those don't go through off of the village, you won't be able to move it over.
But we could have known.
And how long are we expected to sit and wait for all that to happen? How long are we expected to keep our construction on hold?
Go ahead, Angie.
Many of the processes and approvals that we listed and enumerated are village processes and, you know, if the village reviews by your own committee, can the village do anything to speed up that process for your own sake?
Yeah, of course. I mean, I'm always in favor of moving things along as fast as possible.
Right. To maybe speedate some of the, you know, reviews and, and all that process, so it won't take much and much.
So realistically, four and a half months is what we have at most. And I already talked about getting grants. I know from my own experience at the park district as well as here at the village, and we saw it with the Lake Michigan grant, it's one thing to say, okay, you've been awarded the grant, but then you could wait two or three years before the money becomes available.
No, my understanding is, my understanding, because I'm applying under the, the word, and my understanding is that the application's due December 18th and we will find out in January, within two weeks, the money will probably last.
Finding out is one thing. Getting the money available is a totally different thing.
But I, I just said that within two weeks of being awarded, most likely the money will be in our account. It will transfer quickly.
Where is this coming from?
Lake County's grant came to us as far as economic development and, and historic preservation. So I, we're, we're applying for the same grant for the downtown, we provide it to them. This might as well be available first, second quarter of 2024.
It's a DCO grant thing, DCO granting, I've seen this, I've seen-
I've seen it too as well.
So, if everything's done by the end of March, the school and the barn can go straight there. That's no problem.
So this is a not, this is a not-profit organization. Is the village going to assist the historical society, reduce the process and, and offer some help in, in the process of applying for any permits and all of that?
It doesn't feel like I'm part of the team, it feels like I'm just being tolerated.
You want to comment on, you were going to-
Well, I, I think there was something that Jeff put together on, on how long it will take to actually get contracts to move the barn, so you have to start that process. You can't start it in March to move it April 1st, you have to start when?
For the contracts?
Yeah, to write the specs and write the contracts and award the bids to whoever's going to move the, the barn, you have to do that by, the board has to decide by a certain time.
And we talked about what, middle of January?
Uh, I think it was by the end of December and the board has a meeting on December 12th.
Okay.
So, can all those things happen by December 12th? I think is, we're up against those deadlines.
You know, I, I just want to mention something that is really irrelevant to this particular conversation, but it's something that is a, a, a theme in everything that everyone says who is on this side of the bridge, I mean, of the bridge, of the barn. Um, and that is that there was a certain party who worked for this village, who kept them out and kept me out. And it started long before September. And so when you look at them and say, well, why weren't you doing anything? Because they didn't know. They didn't know because somebody kept them in the dark and kept me in the dark. So let's be quite kind to their concern about timing and, and, and the efforts that they are putting in to this closed door. We got our flyers on, we got our earphones on and we're not going to do anything other than stick to those dates. So you know what? We're a bunch of people. People can make changes and, 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 and things can work out. And if every time you walked into a door that was closed and you said, oh my God, the door's closed, I can't do anything more, we would do nothing.
How long should we put our construction?
I'm not asking you to take, but I don't like your attitude that says, nope, this is what the village needs to do.
What's my attitude? Do we-
All right, all right, all right, all right, order everyone, order everyone. Ryan, you have a comment, I'm going to let-
I look at this as truly, if we go back to the day of the bridge, you know, there was separation, I think if we all look back, then realize the bridge actually was built for the village. Instead of finding a solution of not getting done, I think this is a way that we, as a community, can really come together. And if we all work together, I think there's abilities through grants, through community to make this work.
We support them.
And, and, but I think that's the way we should, what even here, people with schedules, on building schedules, as I help in building and the community building, a schedule, if you say it's going to happen here, it's really going to happen here. Jeff, I think we'll spend 20 days or so. Also follows, if we say people, it's really going to probably truly near June, which gives a little flexibility to say, okay, this grant is due in December, we'll know early January, so if we're 30 days, even 45 days to say, here's our deadline to get moved in. If, if 30 to 45 days, it, it means that we can do this once. I think it saves the village and the community a lot of money. I think it, it gives us a lot of opportunity to brand this, to market this, and how a village comes together to save historic buildings and preservation, to help and, and, and support the whole downtown and like, and like what was stated earlier by Aaron, when you come into Long Grove, even on, on the highway, come to historic downtown Long Grove, this just continues the, our brand that we have the village. So I, I think maybe over the next, maybe two or three weeks, we should get together and say, how do we make this work together instead of, here's our hard deadline, let's let this end.
Let me, let me, let's step this back, it's, you know, Jean, hold on a second, let me just say something really quick, because I would like to, as village president. So first off, presenting a schedule doesn't, you know, it's, it's an idea, I don't think that I'm, I'm married to that schedule. We, a couple of things we can do too, we could also, um, come up with some more money to help move it over there. If we had to place it there temporarily because the schedules didn't work, we could, as a board, we could say, hey, you know what, we'll, we'll make that same amount of money available to help move it. We can do that. Because one of the things we don't want to delay is the schedule that we have for this, this building. And so, and then all the processes that was asked, can we simplify? Absolutely. You know, we can work together to get through the red tape, so we shouldn't, there shouldn't be a lot of red tape. So I just, I wanted to say that first because I think we can do this. And I don't know that, I don't know that the, the way this went, it's kind of, you're laying out a schedule just to kind of say, hey, the reality is we got to move along this fast. But if that's the case, then what else can we do, right, to, to help everyone along?
Maybe this part, oh, this part, give them the next three weeks.
And I know, Jean wants, Jean wants to say something, go ahead, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you want to say something really quick?
Yeah, well, all I would say is, is everything I hear from people before or after they bring something to our commission, how difficult the process is to get something done through the village. We're only one stop on a long- We're only one stop on a long chain of things. And to be honest, I don't know that there's anything I can do about that. But I will say, when it is presented, that a non-profit who has no experience or little experience doing this type of thing, is given a list of items that they have to do when they have absolutely no experience doing that, and no knowledge of doing that, it's almost as if this is a fait accompli, good luck with that process, we'll see what you figure. So all I am saying is that I agree with Orion saying, and what you said, and that if the people could work together, then it might happen. If the Historical Society could get some assistance and some aid from the village through the process, it might work.
Thank you for that. And I think, but I think the stuff that was laid out was just kinda saying, this is the stuff we have to work through. I don't know that it was like, it's all yours, you know, problem, but go.
That's a deep, that way.
Yeah.
You did the stuff, you did the thinking, it was changing your goal.
I don't think we do that.
Okay, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I have some comments and some questions. And, you know, I agree. I think, I think this is an opportunity for us to collaborate, and so hopefully assume the intent of people. I'm not hearing that in everybody's voices tonight, but hopefully we can move forward that we can do this and assume the best out of all of that. I do think that there's some opportunities, you know, financially, maybe we can help. I, I am mindful of what I understand. We do have to give the same process to everybody. That doesn't mean we can't figure out how to move things along, 'cause if we advantage somebody, then somebody else later will come in and get upset, and I would understand that. So we have to give the same process to everybody, but how do we figure out some of these things? You know, I look at plans and say, all right, we're talking about sewer, add another seventy thousand, because that gives more opportunities for laying buildings out on the campus. Is that something we want?
We have to have twenty feet?
I don't know why we have twenty feet. I'd love to know why we have twenty feet. I don't know why we have twenty feet. I do understand wetlands. So those are comments. I, I would like to figure some of this out. My question, um, one, am I correct on the whole sewer thing, is, that's a topic just because, because it gives more opportunity for the geography?
Actually, that was my idea.
That, that is more opportunity for the geography, because then you don't have to, you don't have to, you don't have to septic.
Septic tank goes away. And then you can put the hose.
Yeah, you don't have to septic. Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Number two, part of the schedule, I understand from prior meetings, was about moving things on soft ground versus hard ground in winter. So that does put us against the schedule. Am I correct in remembering that, or is that sort of changed? Is that sort of changed?
It is.
Okay, so that's one thing that isn't as flexible. I keep, love to, um, so, you know, how do we do some of that? And I would like to back up Kent. Speaking for myself, I think it would be great to have all of this in a campus, okay? The, the back parking lot, behind a school, off of a road where you can't see Diddley Squad, is no place for a.
For years, we used to just throw horseshoes back there.
Yeah, you know, so I would like to figure this out. On, on the other hand, though, please, everybody's gotta come to the table and do things they haven't done before, okay? So.
You know, can I just make one other comment, too? I, I find this really interesting, because the Historical Society was formed to accept this village hall over here, right? I find that, I just find that interesting. So now the shoe's kinda on the other foot.
I know, right?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And so that's where I feel, I feel like we have to figure it out, and I, and I mean that sincerely, and, and I don't know that, I don't know that Kent wasn't necessarily saying that he was going through the, you know, all the stuff that had to be done, the whole schedule.
He laid it out, what we're up against, you know?
I think we, we have to keep a sense of hope, too.
Well, we have to work like hell while we do that.
Yeah, but, but if, 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 if your, if your intention is to kill it, no. But, but, but to be hopeful that all we've placed, don't fall down.
It, it's also, to be honest, you know, at the end of the year, we've got an interim manager. We don't have full staff at the village either, and we're always been too, so, you know, I mean, trying to say.
You're only interim manager?
I'm not, I'm telling you, I, I'm just saying, you know.
We're in transition ourselves.
Welcome new managers.
Is there a way for the community, um, together, here's a layout of plan, and then bringing it to everyone to say, who's willing to be one part of this, and let this happen as a group, not just so it's all you guys? But I think it's unfair to say it's a simple presentation, but if we can come up with a plan and, and an action, say, here's what needs to be done, who's willing to take one parts of it, let the community come together, downtown, through, not just that, but other organizations, as well as the town, the village, come together and say, okay, we're all gonna help, and let's proceed, and maybe go faster. I think there's an element here that we could help this, this effort.
You know, that's how things get done.
Right.
When Barbara Turner couldn't get on her porch, there was this and this, and, and a whole domino effect, and it took place.
But I, I think Kent laid out, you know, there's a timeline and a punch list, okay? And, you know, do they, can they, can they go faster? Can we figure out how to flush them up? Yeah. But those still are the things that need to happen.
Right, but taking that and making that work so we can help facilitate that.
And I think the number one thing that needs to happen is get money.
I think that's happening.
And a decision, and a decision on the sewer.
I, I believe that there are some technical aspects that, that Jeff outlined, too, including regarding the, uh, the wetlands and the, the buffers for that.
Yeah, wetlands.
And then that will drive how the orientation of any buildings could be on the site. So I think that those technical issues are probably, and Jeff, I'll defer to you and to Taylor, but it would seem to me that those technical issues need to have some degree of resolution so that one can start doing some material site planning and then move forward.
Chris, could we name it the Jeff Barn?
Go, go ahead, Rita.
You can name it whatever you want.
You give up? Okay.
Should the sewer stop at, at the brewery? Is that where the sewer comes out? It's, it's right in front of the brewery, right?
Who's gonna take the leadership? That's what worries me, because there's so many.
The wine is coming to the good.
Do we have a bottom line on this?
Do we have a line?
Bottom line, it's, it's not fifty thousand, it's not a hundred thousand.
Oh.
Do, do, I know, I know you, I know you sent some of these numbers and some proposals this week, it's just some information. Do, I under, what I understand is, we need to move this to keep it safe. So I, I don't think anybody wants, if you're gonna do sides, which I, I, I don't, I'm, I feel badly that that's the perception, and that's the way that this is being taken or displayed or whatever. So we talked about making this building more workable for the community, and we said, if we leave the barn there, it has, there's a great risk it's gonna be damaged, period, end of story, it's construction, you have big machines out there. So let's, okay, we need to move it. So we pick it up and we move it, that's, that's the plan.
Just clarify.
No, hold on, hold on. So to move it in winter and, and not stop village hall process, progress, it's gonna cost us fifty grand, plus we have to put it on a little foundation, right, that's a hundred thousand seventy-five, which.
So it's a hundred thousand dollars, you know, it depends what kind of foundation you're gonna put it on. Um, and I, and I think, it's in one of your minutes, Ken, you know, there's, if the, uh, location of the barn is chosen, you would wanna put it on a more permanent foundation, and, you know, being somewhere else just temporarily, put it on something much like it is right now, um, which was gonna be a lot less expensive. A permanent foundation, you know, it's in the numbers of twenty-five thousand dollars. But something, or a temporary foundation's gonna be much less, I attend somewhere in there.
Okay, so we're talking sixty to seventy-five thousand for us to move it from here to there?
Oh, really?
Just the foundation, twenty-five.
No, no, I can talk about for the, to move it, to move it to next to school.
Twenty-five, and the foundation will be, what did you say, is it temporary or?
So the total, the total cost is about?
I'm just talking about the, just the foundation.
Right.
So he's trying to get all the.
Right, so, so all in is thirty-five to fifty?
To go from here to the Historical Society?
No, here somewhere else.
Across the yard there.
There's a lot of variables in all of the scenarios.
Right.
So if you're talking about moving it from here temporarily to the parking lot, was eighteen thousand dollars.
We took that off.
Okay. From here temporarily over here was, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars, okay? To take this from here to permanently put it over by the Archer School was fifty thousand dollars, 'cause you gotta make the foundation, and then you get across the wetlands. So that was, that's fifty thousand.
That's.
Now, if, and this is where I was, um, in the back of my mind, you know, if you, if you took it from here over to Archer School and put it on a temporary foundation, that's gonna bring down that cost by ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
So, because, you know, we also are looking at the numbers, the current numbers on this construction. Those aren't going down. So, so for, for us, the numbers keep going up. To preserve it and protect it, we can do as little as twenty-nine, as much as fifty. That's there, with their numbers, based on what we can do.
Fifteen here, yeah.
Okay, all right. And to move it across town is easily a hundred thousand, because all the utilities have to be disconnected, it's, it's a major deal. And then, then there is the expense of foundation there, and there's the expense of sewer or septic. And I think I'm leaping out a bunch of.
And that's only the barn?
That's just the barn.
And if we do the school?
Can, can I mess you up, or do, can I derail you, or you?
Well.
Oh, keep going, I have a thought.
It seems to me that from an efficiency standpoint, it's been here for, in this location, fifty years?
Probably forty-five.
Oh.
But who's counting? But who's counting?
So, so, you know, it was an inconvenience, here you go, because I remember my kids were attending docent classes here and appreciating it and enjoying it. I don't know what the maintenance costs are on it. What did, what would you say the maintenance fees have been the last ten years?
We, I can't say, because Chris, the channel's no longer with us. And so my husband's now taking stuff over.
I mean, his treasure, it, um, I can't recall where we spent a thousand dollars in a single year on it, so less than a thousand a year.
Insurance, insurance. Well, okay, so, okay, fifteen hundred dollars a year maintenance, that, there.
That would cover.
Whatever, whatever, okay, okay. And it's almost irrelevant. But to me, from an efficiency standpoint, in dollars, you know, it, it just seems like, and, and it's the historical deciding decision, of course, but, but how high, how much is too much? What's a reasonable number? And I know you don't know about grants, so that certainly would, would defray some of that expense. But I, but where, where would the rest come from to move it there as opposed to having a stay at least on this property with the schoolhouse and with this building? Would that be that bad to do that?
As I said before in the comments, you cannot see the buildings through, buildings from the street at all. And if you tuck all the buildings back, it'll even be difficult to see from the parking lot. And I learned by having the Lake County Historical Alliance here, that we have them moving all over town to see our buildings. This was a difficult location, giving them the address, I got so many, so much confusion and so many requests about where this was. I was giving specific instructions and people still got lost. So I'm just saying that leaving them here is not exactly a solution. And as I said, we can, we used to have tour groups, and the group tends to be seniors, and the, just getting to the Archer School with those stepping stones is difficult. If you put that barn back where they planned, which is all the way in the back of the property, they would just be walking over grass, they would not do that. I mean, I'm a physical therapist, I can tell you they're not gonna do that. It's a, you've got a trip factor going on. So it simply will not be used, it will not be used.
And, and I, I understand that, and, and I think you mentioned that the, the last time you were here, that you'd had that meeting, and it was difficult. And it was the first time, and so, you know, you realize those things. But it, it seems to me that, that they don't have to be invisible, they don't, it doesn't have to be difficult to get to, if there's pathways, golf carts, whatever, on days where the people come. I, I don't, I don't think.
We're not gonna be renting golf carts to people around a mile away from us, between the, that's not feasible.
Okay, okay, I get it. But what I'm saying is, I guess what I'm getting at is, is cost benefit. And, and I'm, and I'm wondering, I have no answers, I just.
Can I?
I think the answer may be the grants, and it's just hundreds of thousands of dollars that could be available for the grant, and that's fifty-fifty share, not just putting that fifty-fifty share, labor hours per time counts as part of that grant. So again, if that grant potentially is approved, and there's a fifty-fifty split, I think it's up to five hundred thousand dollars.
I see.
That's available.
So labor hours for.
Labor hours for the preparation, so the amount of time that goes into planning is considered hours that could be used as part of the fifty percent here.
I see.
As well as potentially, that's what we can look at, public donations, we can look at village funds. There's the potential that majority of this could be available because of the grant money available for the preservation of this Historical Society. I think that's the area that we can say, if this is available, this makes sense to do. Truly, to Aaron's point, if it's not available, what is the best way to preserve the property so that the whole community can use this? I think that's where we should really be looking at and focusing on time. Time frame, Kent is a hundred percent. I think we've got this open window for the next thirty days to apply for the best grant possible for the village. If we can approve it, how do we maximize it? Because to all parties, it helps everyone. If we don't get it, what is, what, if that's, what's the second option?
I would say, it seems to me, like, if, if, if I were on the Conservative side, I'd be starting a, a money-raising campaign now, because no matter what. We'd always use it. If it, I know, it's just, if, if, if that's the desire, and I, if that's the desire to have them all three together, pardon?
It's already there. We, we, as part of the grant process, it's a matching grant.
Yeah.
So we gotta, we gotta, uh, figure out how we're gonna get the part that gets matched, and how hard it's starting. This, this was a key project together, where we wanted to come together and discuss that. So again, I think the biggest part is, with the now to December eighteenth, how do we get this grant personally fitted so that it's gonna benefit the community?
Can I just, can I just bring one thing up, too? And maybe, maybe it's already been talked about, but we, we did some research that we know that there's the possibility to put the barn over by the Historical Society building. So could it be, one of the options is, is that while the, everything else is being sorted out, we just move the barn there, put it on a temporary platform, put it there safely so that it's positioned there, and once all the money and everything else gets sorted out, then it can be, you know, put in its proper place. And rather than setting it off over here, one of the option, other options is, we figure out how to get it over there, put it on a temporary platform, and let them work it all out, and just do it that way. And then, you know, and maybe it becomes, the only money they can get is for the barn, this stays here for now, maybe in a later year, they go and they move that over, but at least that stuff starts getting going, 'cause, 'cause then you don't have to get the sewer thing figured out yet.
Right.
Well, and didn't they do that with the, the farm off? Didn't it sit there? I'm looking at somebody.
We, well, they, they may have, they may participate in the, in the amount, but the amount of money that we're taking to put it over here temporarily, whatever, that goes toward just moving it over there.
Right.
And they, and they put it on a temporary platform until they can get enough money to put it in a permanent location.
When, when, when would that be?
What do you mean?
If construction starts in the spring.
In January.
Yeah, in January, just.
Are you suggesting we front the money?
What's that?
Are you suggesting we?
Well, we could front the money, too. I don't know, I don't know what I don't know yet, but what is that, what is the cost to move it there? A hundred grand, what was it? What was it?
It was a hundred downtown.
Hundred, and we said we were going to put about, we'd have to put fifty or sixty in. So maybe they gotta come up with forty grand. I don't know when they figure out how to do it, but at least we get it over there.
But that was, we have the money.
If we, if the downtown gave...
You, you have it?
We have, we were, when you discussed in your meeting, that you were willing to give us fifty to sixty thousand, we have matched it now.
You have matched it?
Yes.
Who did, who said we would?
So we are...
We didn't say we would give it to them, but we said it would cost this to move it, so they're thinking...
And that they would, it was in the situation that she would allow us to, if it didn't move over there, that you would, you would allow us to use the money to move, help move it over to our location. So we've matched your money already. And then if we get a grant, it will double our money.
We're talking about over two hundred dollars now.
No, I don't...
You can get the grant, you can get the school, too.
I don't think anyone ever said that, but the assumption is, if we're going to spend the money to move it over here, why wouldn't we let them, why wouldn't we let, use that same money to he, help them move it all the way over there? Right? What would be the difference? You know what I mean? I don't think anyone said yes to it yet, but that's a, that, one can make that assumption.
Yeah, if we went, instead of going through the whole downtown, where you've got a lot of power poles, if we were to go through the village lot, village tavern, through the spot where John's at, between the building we just purchased, and where John's at...
John's at the treehouse.
And, no, if we were, there's plenty of, if we were to get through there to bypass four or five power poles, is there a way, with all the drop of easement, to say, hey, we were willing to let this come through with a truck? It may eliminate twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar expense. I think the property near us downtown would say, yes, let's figure out a solution there to bypass having it adjust property, power lines. By going through the village lot.
Do you know that power lines go through the lot?
It's a good plan. There's only one, there's, there's one set to the line that would affect, and that would be the outside lines on RPC between John and, and the multicolored building, and then across by the interstate farm. But literally cross that roadway right there, you've got two power poles versus five or six coming down the main thoroughway. Where you've got multiple power poles.
How wide would the vehicle have to be to get through that?
We would find a solution around that. We've got tractors.
No, I, no, I was more concerned about the, the, the economy, we don't...
But I, I think it's, it's worth looking at. You have a good idea.
I was, I was like, oh, man, I don't know.
Yeah. We, uh, we do downtown, we're all in favor of trying to find a solution that saves twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars because we can shorten the amount of power poles that we're going to, the number of...
No, I agree, we, we did...
Rita, can I now ask my one question? Because it'll bother me until you answer it, and that is, you said that we're, that we're moving the barn because it'll be in, in, in the way of construction? That it would get damaged from the, so, so...
I think it was going to be moved to the parking lot.
I'm asking Rita.
Well, I'm answering your question.
If, if it stays here, or it gets moved twenty feet? There are big trucks that are going to...
No, no, no.
...get out of here. I said, I said that there's a chance it could be damaged during construction.
If it was left there?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's why we're moving it? It's because of the construction vehicles?
Yeah.
Just to...
So it definitely gets damaged. I mean, even if we moved it fifteen, twenty feet, it's still going to be in harm's way. It's like, just because...
Oh, you're activated, you got...
Have you looked at it?
Okay, I, I didn't know that until I went in the room.
You can't have done that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So that's...
Yeah, it wasn't destroyed, and I've done...
This is all...
No, 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 I, I wasn't concerned with that.
Yeah, we're, so, so can we, because we have one more item we have to do tonight.
Shouldn't we have to make here?
Yeah, that's what I mean, so, help me out a little bit here, Art, you had some thoughts.
I, I think what we can do is, if Jeff, if Jeff can look at whether an alternate route to downtown is feasible, number one. Number two, can it be done, and so that the barn could be moved by, before April first? So that we can still continue with the village hall constructions. In other words, do both, make, meet both goals. So we need to know that, and then at the, at the meeting on November twenty-eighth, if, if that information's available by then, because I know we give Jeff so much to, um, then we can move forward from there. And I think we'll talk about financing, because it might involve extra money on the village's part.
Well, they just said that they have...
Or it might involve the extra money upfront and make, and, and, and back into it later.
So if there was some amount of money that we had to, fifty grand, whatever it is, that we, if we moved it on site to replace it, if that money could be used to move it, and they come up with the rest, which I understand, you have that money right now, correct?
We have matching funds for you.
You, they have matching funds?
And then we're looking for, let's say, to match our combined funds.
With the board, with the board, just a straw poll, would the board be okay with going that kind of an approach? Um, and, and we don't know the exact money, but in the, in the range? Or would you be opposed to that? Um, and that then would allow, in figuring out a route, that, that then would allow the barn to be put over there temporarily placed? If they got more funds, it could be permanently placed, but temporarily placed until the, all the stuff got sorted? Would you be agreeable to that? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I mean, money is money. If it's, if we're spending fifty to move it, seriously, if we're spending...
We're spending more money for it.
If we're spending, if we're spending money to put it over in the back forty or the, or the back parking lot, that, that, that's, and that's the collective desire. What I do want to do, but I don't want to do, though, is continue to chew on the decision and have it delay the schedule. I don't want that.
Well, I think we should all agree, we're not going to change the schedule. We're not going to change it, of course.
Right.
Well, these gentlemen may die awaiting for us.
They may die waiting for us to shut up tonight, too.
Okay, so you, you're unsure, or...
They're, they're going to be shopping for far more comfortable chairs for the new boardroom.
You got the...
I, I like the concept of it, Bill. That was in the details, how much money is it? Because to me, you know, we start with the base of taking the structure here and just getting it the heck out of the way is kind of our baseline. You know, I don't, I don't think that's fifty, I think that's thirty-nine is what I'm hearing. So, you know, it's still, that was in the details, I mean, I love the concept.
Hold, hold on, let me, so are you okay with that idea?
Yeah, my goal is to preserve the barn, preserve the construction schedule, and to the extent that you want it over at the Historical Society. Go ahead, take it.
Do you, what do you want?
Where do I want it?
What do you, Castanucci, make it to go?
Where you want it. As long as our...
You have, you have no problem.
I will get you.
No, he said, he said he wants it over, he wants it over, whether...
If you want it at the Historical Society, I'm fine with that. As long as it doesn't impact our construction schedule.
So Rita, what was your opinion on that?
If, if, if we're spending twenty thousand, thirty thousand, fifty grand, whatever, to move it where it says, I, I, I'm okay, I'm okay using those same dollars to go towards every...
Okay.
Um, I don't have a problem with that.
Is, is, and only a, part of the grant is how do we get funded? Is it okay for the grant, as they write the, the paperwork, that there's funding available to their, they, usually share pot of money? Because as they say, we're going to apply for two hundred thousand or just two hundred and fifty thousand, they need to say, hey, we have a potential fifty thousand here, they have fifty thousand. The potentially could be money from our downtown, I know there's potential money from the line as well as a community pot. Is it okay to say that in a public document, that there's monies available for fund, because that's going to help in the grant writing to ask for money?
It, it's still some that are proven, I don't know why you can't say that, because you've just got the nod, you've just got the...
I'm just trying to help here, I wonder if we...
No, because you...
No, I understand. It, can we pencil in that we would be willing to budget fifty thousand and commit to that for their grant, understanding we don't have all the details? Is that a number we'd be comfortable with?
I'm fine with it, I don't know about the rest of you.
That's what we've been saying all along.
Yeah.
And all of us coming together, putting this together, that's the only point.
Well, whatever that amount, I mean...
Whatever the number is.
Whatever the number is, yeah.
What is the number?
Well, so they threw out a, they threw out a number of fifty grand, so...
Seventy-nine? Oh my God.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, we got, we're out of order again. We're out of, we're... Hold on, timeout, timeout, timeout.
I can clear this up. If we were to permanently move it back there, it's forty-nine.
Hearing loss, car accident.
So to permanently move it back here would be forty-nine thousand dollars?
Right. If we were to temporarily move it over there, it's about forty-nine. If we were to temporarily move it over there, it's about nineteen. If we were to move it to the Historical Society, it's about a hundred.
The nineteen would never be a one shot, because you have to move it back.
That would be temporary, that would be...
So based on that, fifty thousand dollars does not seem like a bad number.
I'm good.
You can't, you can't, you can't put...
Do we have an action here?
Yeah. Two hundred thousand, Monday, without showing proof of that.
Well, you tell me.
No, no, so we're applying for a grant, if it's approved, this is what, if it's not approved, I think at that point collectively, we have to say, okay, what is the best option to make it from at home? I think we, the secondary option is going to have to be the primary. If the grant is approved, it is where, it's home base in downtown is, is where it's at. So we're applying for the plan for the move.
But what I, I know what, what I'm asking is, is, if, if you say you have matching funds, you gotta have matching funds.
So the, the, we would approve the grant, we would ask for, let's say, a quarter billion dollars, which means we have to have a hundred and twenty-five thousand, not two hundred and fifty. We have to say we're applying for two fifty, they're going to cover fifty percent, we have to have fifty percent.
Yes.
So then, fifty potentially could be here, seventy-five would have to be here. They would provide, they would provide that additional.
I, I thought you were saying...
No, no, it really had to come in right in there. No, no, there has to be a real little...
Yes.
And that's what the grant, right? We have to say where it's coming from.
Yes.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to...
Everyone, yes, okay, so I...
Do we have an action we have to take here, or is this directional?
Directional, right now. I don't think we have to, you are, you all are saying that the fifty thousand dollars, approximately, forty-nine, whatever it is, we'll say fifty, it would take to put it over there permanently, we would allow them to use that money towards moving it.
Yes.
Downtown, yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you, first of all.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you very much. And if, my perspective after basically trying to get in on this, the whole discussion here was so collaborative. It was very, it's very encouraging for us that you're month in, month out, trying to be involved in this process. This has been very encouraging for us, the whole process. Honestly, I mean, this is how hard I've been beating my head trying to get involved in this, and then, so much. So I really appreciate all the, the collaboration going on here, and all the ideas and the give and take. I just wanted to thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I would ask that in the future, if there is doubt, just say, hey, did I misinterpret this? Is this what you guys are saying, or is this not what you're saying? Rather than thinking that, I mean, I get the impression that the thinking is, it's you against us, and it's that's never...
Well, I'd be honest with you, if I, I mean, I, you saw me coming to board meetings all the time. And I mean, one time I walked in and it felt like, you hear about this, this barn, like, yes, me, I'm always here about the barn. And then every time I talk to a certain individual, it's just, it's been there, how many times I ask and ask and ask and ask, that's, we know, everything. It's not time. I never have a...
We all have that point today, we've, we've made a lot of compromises, I think we should momentum the past, we should focus on that.
Correct.
But I'm saying, this whole process here now has been so collaborative and is very, very encouraging to us.
Could you just confirm that whatever you think you might have heard the negatives, that we meant that one?
It's, it's a very valid point, and I'm going to keep us moving, can we do that? Thank you, everybody.
I think everyone, I'm going home.
Yes, good night.
See you every now and then.
All right. So we have another important topic.
Five to seven or six days.
I've got some amazing things to share with you shortly.
So, good luck on that.
Thank you. Brian, Brian, five, seven, or six days.
I will be there tomorrow night, you'll see me. All right, so...
Where am I showing up?
By the bridge, by the bridge.
All the shots will be open, we have our, all the lighting throughout the town, shots will be open, shots in there as well. So if you find us, you'll find the shot.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's keep us moving, the, um, what did Art do now? He's leaving us. Okay, so, this is consideration approval of village hall cost estimates and the authorized, the authorization to bid. This is the next item on the agenda. This is where Art's going to come back and sit down and help us here.
And I, but I can start.
You can start, okay, go ahead.
Awesome.
Yeah. So in the board package, we had documents titled Original Plan, Option A and Option B. And in each drawing, there was a description of what changes from one to the other. I'll give a high-level overview and then we can discuss. So Original Plan is what it is. Option A expands the storage room, expands the executive session conference room, and eliminates one toilet, because we need that room that the toilet previously occupied.
Option A?
I'm sorry, I'm confused, take that back. Everything I said before the toilet is correct. I'll, I'll summarize again. Bigger storage room, bigger executive conference room, slightly larger building to accommodate so it's going to be things in slightly smaller facility than you brought up. That's Option A. That is less than seven thousand dollars. If you don't want to spend that extra money, Option B is to remove one of the toilets and use the room that the toilet used to take up for the executive, um, and that one still again, the storage is a huge issue. The working group felt that if we have only one toilet in the public space, we would come to regret that decision very quickly.
I concur.
Yeah. So then there are other things we could consider to save on, and with the exception of one of them, the working group felt that they were not going to compromise. One is to eliminate the generator, which saves about ninety-six thousand, but as I understand, you can do pre-wiring, right? Maybe you can add in some pre-wiring, so if we add a feature, it's already ready to go. And you just drop it. That's one, they're going to decide. And again, the question was in the board package, it's small enough, and you can include it in room one, like vinyl siding instead of cemented wood siding. I didn't see much vinyl siding on the building. And various other small things like that. So really, the recommendation is to go with what's called Option A. Again, that preserves all toilets, expands the storage area, slightly reduces the village Again, that preserves all toilets, expands the storage area, slightly reduces the building manager's office and expands the building out. Add another hundred and forty square feet to the building for an extra fifty-seven thousand. And then eliminate the generator to put it to be wired. That's our recommendation.
I had two questions on it. I had two questions on it. One, because, one is, it's taking out some of the aisle way that's in here. When I read it, it takes away a little bit of the aisle way as it expands that Option A pushes out the back wall. Sorry, back wall, um, back wall and takes some of the aisle way. Does it still come, if we ever have a village board member who needs a wheelchair, I want to make sure that, like, we don't work ourselves out of that.
Certainly, yes, all appearances will be.
Okay, like easily, easily, easily turn. The other, this is weird, but the two toilets, like, there's space on the original and then that space goes. Is that gonna be a, like, maintenance thing later that we regret? Because that was, like, cleaned up for plumbing or something or?
No.
Okay. 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 Those are my questions.
Can I just, um, team's here and I just want to ask, on the siding of this building, do you have concerns about changing the siding?
The downtown guidelines do not accept vinyl siding.
That's what I thought.
Okay. We don't want it anymore.
Love hardboard or some type of.
Got it, thank you for that.
That's what's proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Anna, you wanted to discuss some of the cost increases.
Yeah, I just.
Can we ask some more questions first?
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, how many, how many cubicle spaces can you fit in that seven-hundred-and-six square foot range? I mean, you got the desk run in, uh, no mention. How many, how many employees can we expand and put into that seven-hundred-and-six square foot office space comfortably?
Mine's for four.
Okay, but how many can we expand to if we needed to add more people? Is that it? Is four our number or? Sorry? Well, I'm just asking, because there's no room for expansion here, right? That's a real concern for me, there's no place to park more people. And if we do add a body or two, where do we put them?
I would say that you probably could add six in there if you needed to.
And so the desks run in there, about how many square feet now?
They are six by eight workstation.
Six by A, which is pretty okay size compared to base standard, I think. Where would the other two go?
They would probably go in the northeast and southeast corners.
So you'd have. Add another L.
Like they, they talk to each other?
You can do that or they could be facing the same direction.
Okay, so we all good with that being our maximum expansion number if we're gonna spend two million dollars? Everybody okay with that?
Here's my thinking, rightly or wrongly. Our, I mean, our model has been very much, you know, lots of outsourcing, small village government kind of thing. I think, um, moving forward, and we even heard it from some of the comments we were getting earlier between five-thirty and seven, on more technology for kind of mundane things and, you know, save our precious staff for the things that only people can and should do. So, I, I don't know, I, I think that there might be an opportunity that, I, I don't, I don't get as concerned about space or people permanently in the office. That's me.
Can I ask another question?
That doesn't make it right.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Matt? So what if we took the conference room in the back? If we, let's say we put six here and then we needed a couple more, that this conference room that's gonna go back where Margarita sits, would there, you'd be able to put two cubes back there? Would it be big enough?
The problem with that space is that it's not accessible. You have to go upstairs to get to it. And you look at several options for how you could eliminate that by trying to put in some sort of ramp. But it would, you know, it eats up so much space.
But does it, in, a lot, I mean, the stairs upstairs, I mean, it's unbelievable right now, we got two attic spaces, right? But if the person is healthy and able to climb a stairs, I mean, is it an issue, right? It's only if the person is, has a disability of some sort, right?
Once, once we touch this, I think we have to make it ADA.
Is it really? But the conference room, the conference room, you have to walk up the stairs to get to this conference room?
Yeah.
Was actually the impetus for adding what is now called the executive session conference room.
Okay.
That one will be accessible.
But every room, every office space will have to be ADA accessible, is what you're saying?
Okay, once you touch it.
But we don't, we don't have that to this person.
No, we don't.
We may never have that to this person. Because if, the trend I was hearing was farming it out.
Right.
So, I'm not real concerned about that to this person.
I have a question about the storage room.
Can I have that in the mayor's office?
Still a restroom?
Yeah, restroom. Thanks, Bobby.
My experience with closets, that if there's a walk-in closet, you get all that perimeter space and this is wasted in the middle. Whereas if you have a wall of closets, you've got tons more storage space. So by making this storage space bigger, you just increase the space in the middle.
So the intent of this storage is largely for tables and chairs? And so thinking about stacking tables and chairs, that space in the middle is pretty usable. If you're talking about, you know, storing boxes or other things, then I would agree, is you're gonna line the perimeter and the area in the middle.
Okay, all right, so, so we're piling chairs one on top of another.
The problem with the question, what are we storing in the storage room?
Right, yeah.
There's also some mechanical space in terms of the boardroom, the audio video systems that are being planned will have their, had to have equipment in that space, so.
Okay, that was, that was my question, what are we, so we've got knockdown tables and stackable chairs?
Similar to these types of tables, yeah, they, they will hold and, and that.
I see, I got you, okay.
Why don't the audio video not go in the IT room? Besides, it'd be far away, isn't that what IT rooms are for, like for servers and for electronics, so they're protected?
Sure, but on council night, when, or board night, right, you know, whomever needs to.
Put the switch?
Put the switch or something, you wanna have it.
I'll add, last kind of comment, you know, I, from day one, when I saw the plan, I had the same question, the same comments. The lobby area, the desk view and the walkway between the two offices is four-hundred-and-thirteen square feet plus seventy-seven, that's five-hundred. Plus whatever that space is between the offices and other, I don't know, you guys call it, another fifty, sixty, seventy square feet in there? That's like five-hundred-fifty, six-hundred square feet of what's essentially an open wasted space. And yet we don't have room to expand for a couple more floors. I still struggle with that. I get it, ADA, I get it. But, and it's probably gonna be a very grand entrance to this very powerful room that we're sitting in. But, but it just seems like it's an awful lot of wasted space. And if we're paying three-hundred-and-fifty a square foot to build it, it just seems like an awful lot of wasted space to me. There's that, but I get it, understand it.
I, I absolutely agree with having a larger conference room. If we're gonna have one, it needs to be that size.
Yeah, I'm through with that.
I have a question. Do the plans contemplate storage and building permits that are now stored off-site, so they would be available for research?
No, there's actually, in future stuff, we've got some capital stuff on, and it's currently going on digitizing all kinds of that stuff. We'd much rather have it that way.
That would be great, but, like, how long will that take?
It's a priority, it's just staff, it needs staff to do it, so it's at the top of the list to do it.
I think about twenty other things.
No, you've gotta, no, you've gotta oversee on it, like, under.
Oh, okay, no, he says the staff.
But we still need staff to.
I understand that, I understand that.
Yeah, go ahead, there's a question back there.
Not a question, but a comment. I realize that, or what I'm hearing, is that you are finding the ADA requirement inconvenient. I've never experienced this, I would suggest that you spend a day in a wheelchair or spend a day pushing someone in a wheelchair. And then you will find out how important to have ADA compliance.
Yeah, no, and don't, don't, don't interpret my remarks as not being concerned about ADA. Having a disabled, my wife's brother was disabled and everything else, so don't interpret that at all. It was just, if you needed somebody to go over there, that was the question, so.
I'm completely, I, I, anybody downtown Ogilvy? And I'm not in need of that, thank goodness. But I remember watching somebody get off my train on track five and have to go way over there to get that elevator and then go way over there to get that minstrel.
But it was never meant to, to say that that's not important and it should be enabled, so anyways. All right, so what do we need to do here tonight? We need to approve the Plan A, but after, after, after.
So we have.
Explains the cost.
Plan A has, is showing fifty-seven over our original thought, but our whole original thought got bigger. And I was curious, what did we learn between here and there? Because some of these costs went up thirty-five percent. What did we learn?
Well, I think the simplest way to explain it is we started with a conceptual plan and based on precedent, we were able to apply some cost per square foot rule of thumb, right? And what, now that you add it, based on is a, you know, fully designed set of documents that anticipate the wall construction, mechanical systems and obviously the, you know, the site work that's involved. So what we've learned is a lot, right? We've learned a lot about this building and, and obviously some of the assumptions, those cost per square foot rule of thumbs that we applied to, you know, basically a diagram were inaccurate. So this is, you know, obviously more detailed cost estimates than what we're.
What is A E F B D to C A?
Yeah, so. Our initial engagement facility was schematic, was from schematic design through contract documents, so S to B.
Okay.
B D to C A is bidding through construction administration.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Can I ask a door question? I mean, I, this is all, yeah, what kind of doors are contemplated for the, all the offices and all the doors?
In terms of materials?
Yeah.
There are wood doors.
Okay, can I ask the board to reconsider that and put some kind of glass lights in along the doors so that there's visibility into each office?
Yeah.
For a security perspective and so that no employees get too amorous on the desktop or anything like that?
Well, and, and nobody.
Don't laugh, it's happened.
I don't mean, I don't mean it's funny, I know it's happened.
You know what I'm saying, those little. The doors that people can at least look in. Not here, of course it isn't, let me clarify that.
Well, it, it, it's a balance, because you don't want total clear glass in case somebody's getting hot with an employee, and I don't mean that kinda hot.
I understand.
I mean, temper hot.
So that, kind of that whole fade-out.
And in order to, the discussion with staff as we were going through the design, the door, we're opening the door out here.
They can be secured, but I just want to be able to make sure people can see what's going on in there and to an extent, make sure that there's no security issues.
No hidden spaces.
Well, if it's no security issues.
This is kind of a good question, but why, you just went there. We're too small to do a full-on mother's room, but if a mother needed a place, where would that be?
Conference room.
Pardon me?
The conference room.
The pump, where would that be?
Now, if I put a window in it, yeah.
We can't have dedicated space, but where would it be? Been there, but I've just.
What do they do in Dale Park?
Don't know.
What do they do in Dale Park? Your company, that building.
Good question, I think that they use a.
I don't recall seeing anything.
I, I don't, we can't afford a dedicated room, but I would like to know that we've actually thought of it and, you know, make sure there's outlets and so forth and child's room with it.
No, that's a great, great point, we will, we will take that up again.
Great point, you thought I was not.
No, you were not, you were not.
After all the questions, if they basically were asking the board to agree to the, the Option A with the changes been discussed and also to authorize a world to go out to bid for Option A.
And presumably the contingency went down because we learned something.
So we started with a higher contingent.
Yeah.
Because we know more.
And, I mean, financially, it's not like we can afford everything, whatever. We've been building up reserves and we've been talking about this. We've got a lot of excess reserves. We also have that, we knew we were gonna be spending money on this. We know that at some point, we're gonna have to spend money on our water system, whether it hopefully comes with Lake Michigan water, but if not, we've gotta, we've gotta deal with radium. So there's money and, you know, and that's like a future year. We've also had, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year in the capital plan, that we, when we put this year's budget together, we did a five-year capital plan, you were part of that. We'll relook at that again, but we're not yet into the next budget year. We're just starting with some of that. But that contemplated about half a million, not this year, but next year, for matching eighty-twenty on pathway, for the Old McHenry Road pathway. We did not get that, according to Jeff. We can reapply, but what that means is that that five-hundred-thousand dollars earmarked for next year for that purpose can be redeployed for this increase here, more or less, plus some of our extra reserves. Again, a dollar here is a dollar there, but that's an easy way to think about it, is that we already, in our capital improvement plan, we hit earmark five-hundred-thousand dollars to be a twenty percent against a two, hopefully a two-million-dollar grant for pathways that we did not score high enough for this time, so we'll have to figure out how to score better and do it again in the future. That all said, so I think, you know, this is a big increase. But with the reserves and the way that the interest rate is being favorably moreous for those reserves, so we're, we're making more income on interest right now. And that pathway that we can push a little bit further. Of course, we are still ahead on our road plan, so if we needed to pull a little bit out of that. This year, we're spending over a million on roads. Next year, the cap, the plans that we put in for the five-year plan are on the order of seven-hundred-thousand each of the next two years. So if we once needed to trim from those, we would still be ahead on our fifteen.
Yeah, we're seventy-seven percent complete on our fifteen-year plan.
Yeah, so, and, and that, at least what we earmarked last year, it had about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand or in the next two years for roads. Are you nodding with me? So that said, you know, details, more or less, because pathway, roads, we can make this happen if we need to, and I think we need to.
So, so, so the dollar amount of Option A is what, is it all in?
The big numbers to look at is this, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's two million dollars, right? Correct?
Two-point-one-four-nine.
All right, so, and then.
And of that, over a million is from ARBA funds, our part of cash.
That's half of it, and then, does that also include the generator in there too?
That would, yes, it would come out.
So you could, you could take that.
But you have to increase it fifty-seven because you're making the, the building a little bit longer. So Option A, and then there's some T B D prices in there. So I think you want to, I don't know if you want to commit to an exact dollar amount, but if you say Option A with the changes discussed here, allowing world to bid for those, I think that would be the motion.
Did you say the generator was being taken out?
Yes, but, but it'll have the pad, et cetera, and the hookups will be there so it can be added later on.
Easily.
Easily. And the grants or whatever you want to do, and, and remember, we, we still, if there is an emergency, the base, the command post would probably be the fire station.
Can I ask, can we just make it an option? So then, so then you can, when we get it all back in, you can say, oh yeah, we'll put the generator in. And just have it, have it be so that whatever the pad, the stuff is.
What's the latest time we could make a decision on the generator?
Well, wait and answer that. The first is, on bid day, obviously, we'll get it as a bid alternate. When you're awarding a bid, you could make a decision at any time. But alternatively, you know, we are, base design would be without the generator, planned for it to be in the future, right? So be set up for it at any point.
We'll be generator-ready?
Now. Smaller sized generators don't have quite the lead time that larger sized generators have, so my assumption is that this building's generator is probably going to be more readily available. But right now, depending on size, generators are running a lot of years.
Thank you, that's helpful to know. So we, so let's, so take action, say we want that as a bid option.
Right, yeah. Is there anything else that should be a bid option too? That could give some flexibility if the costs are really super crazy? Oh, go ahead, George.
When you say it's gonna be ready for the generator, does it mean you're, you're gonna have the transfer switch already included in the base bid? And just the machine outside as the add extra?
No, but there will be space planned for the transfer switch and the, and the cabinet will be ready for it.
So you're gonna have space for it, but you have to buy all the electric to make it happen. So it's not just buying the machine, the generator, it's the infrastructure in the building you have there too.
Well, you'll have that, there'll be conduit and everything already in place, right?
Yeah.
Or whatever you need, I mean, you're an expert, so you could tell us how to do it.
Happy to.
Maybe we can hire him.
So, so what are you saying? How do we do the option then?
Well, he's, he's, he's got a contract for the electrical engineering just to do it like he said. And that's what's gonna be in the.
That's the option.
Yeah. So you'll know that when you have it broken out, what's gonna be in the extra. Which will be the, you know, your transfer switch and the extra wiring and the panels. I mean, but he is an architect, has provision for the space, so that you don't have, you can put it somewhere.
The generator doesn't show up beyond credit, you put it on a pad and you plug it in. There will be more.
There's no adaptation to the building to accommodate the generator.
Built-in of the.
Within reason.
Within reason, right. There will be space within the electrical closet for the transfer.
Does it still?
Yeah.
So there's no supply.
Okay, good point, good point, thank you, George.
They won't have to rewire every outlet in the, in the building, but they will do some interior work to make.
All right, so is there anything else that should be optional or to give us flexibility or?
There are some of the, more cosmatically, the ten mentions that are on the list, that we could bid as alternatives and have that luxury on the, on the bid.
I mean, so like, there was a thing about asphalt shingles for this part of the building versus wood chips, right?
It's a teardress. It's a cedar shake, yeah.
Yeah.
If you come up with some other alternate bids, you could, you could ask the working group whether you want us to alternate bids, if we come up with anything between now and going out to bid.
I'm sorry?
But you don't immediately send up the working group anything?
They're not doing it in the works, yeah. Speak up there, yeah. So, yeah, why, why, no one's doing the cedar shakes anymore, is what we're saying? We have it on this part of the building, but it can be blended with the right type of shingle, right?
Yes, in either scenario, we will, we're replacing the whole roof, so match.
You were replacing the roof over here? It's brand new.
Is that the new roof?
Oh, jeez. We just, this is new, though, up here. Um, no, I thought they did the whole roof. I thought we just did this whole thing.
Thought it was just open.
Oh, you're saying just on, on the old building? Okay, got it.
Environmentally, people aren't putting cedar shakes roofs.
Because they're not cedar anymore, really.
Like, why not architectural shingle or, you know, the newer roofs that a lot, I've seen a lot in new construction, but they're not metal, but they look like metal, but...
Yeah.
Any issues from...
Why are we not, are those more expensive or something?
I don't know. I, I see, I would have to take a look at that. I don't know off the top of my head. I don't think I've ever seen a roof in some business district, so that would have probably...
Well, you were talking metal or just asphalt? Do you think it's DaVinci?
Something that's more environmentally, it's...
So, in, in order of cost, asphalt shingle, cedar shake.
Okay, so that's out.
Yeah, but metal less fit roofs.
But we have a... No, I was looking at, I was looking at Gene back there, because we have a historic building. If you're, you're not going to touch that building, or you're going to touch, are you going to touch the main?
Yes.
You will, the whole thing, all the roofs. So I just want to, I mean, that, that's a factor in preserving the historic building.
We're happy to take a look at it when it comes to a...
When it comes to...
Good idea.
Can we get a setup, like, the bid package before we go out to bid? There's just a lot of questions, and people are asking, what are we doing to the roof? Can we get, like, more details than just the floor plan, or, hey, what if we ran out of set of drawings on the bid package spec before we went out to bid?
Is that to to on it or to be informed?
I think it's both. I, okay, so I'm not sure what we're doing for environmental, anything in here.
I was just going to ask.
Are we doing solar panels? Do we give up on any kind of environmental, anything, or?
Well, yeah.
Is it LEED?
Do we talk about any?
I don't even know what LEED means even, but I'm just saying that for context, but, I mean, I don't know what we're doing, so I, you want me to go out to bid on something I don't know about, so I don't know how to answer your question.
It's kind of like it should be going to a...
Right, before we go out to bid, right? So they come back and go, oh, that's stupid. Would you do that for? I don't know. I just, I don't know why.
What is the LEED status of this? I mean, what is the desire? Zero, none of the above?
Um, we are not pursuing, pursuing, pursue any LEED certification on this site. We are, we design with energy efficiency in mind.
How do you measure that versus the LEED standard? Energy efficiency sounds like a great word, but I don't think so. Oh, which energy code? I'm sorry, I don't...
International Energy.
Well, what's the difference between LEED and...
So, great question. Great question. LEED is a, is a certifying agency, US Building Council. LEED accreditation or LEED certification for a building means that you have achieved a checklist of criteria that they have set forth. There are certain levels of LEED that you've achieved. There are several categories that range from daylighting to indoor air quality to water, water use reduction, access to public transportation, number of others that I've not seen, recycled content material. So, in a small, big renovation project, there's going to be a lot of those categories that are not available to you to get points in. We're not, we're not physically moving this building, you know, so that you're closer to a train line or a bus line. We're not, you know, redeveloping a brownfield, you know, so from a, from that perspective, really not a lot of points to get people after that would satisfy LEED specifically.
So this would not be reasonable for us to do this approach?
It just, no, you would be, would be...
I'm sorry, Dan had his hand up over there, so...
Yeah, so, Dan Lovett, and I haven't met most of you, so in my other life, I'm a construction contractor, we deal with this kind of thing all the time. What I encourage our customers is be outcome-focused, because a lot of times, and I tell them, our customers, I'm like, if you want to pay me extra, you can pay me extras, but the outcome may be identical, but the process, getting the certification is going to increase you more. So just keep in mind, do you want the outcome, or if there's a grant tied with you, you need the actual certification, because very, very often, the outcome is identical. You paid for something you may or may not need for the, for the certification, just to keep track.
That makes total sense. I think what we're, thank you for your patience, and it's 9:25, but I thank you for educating us on this, so, both of you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have another question, it's a proverbial question, and if you can't, if you can't answer it, fine. We spent $2 million on a brand-new, from a ground-up building. How many square feet would that buy? Comparable, comparable quality of materials.
Larger than this building will be one foot nine, for sure. With the budget, the construction costs, hopefully, somewhere in the $400 to $500 a square foot, right?
That's pretty crazy. That's a Bentley or is that a...
I should... Publicly bid prevailing construction.
prevailing.
Okay, thank you for your inspiration, building on the market. Probably not in time.
For what?
Flying aircraft.
We got the money, but we...
Yeah, but we need the aircraft.
Well, you can...
Transfer the aircraft.
Yeah, you can move it for the police protection, you can move them around. Yeah, we didn't do it, actually, no. All right, so, so, I guess, how do we come to a conclusion?
You're catching me here?
Well, there was a desire to look at the spec. You're going to have, you know, not to change it, just to look at it, see what's in there. And somebody might notice something and say, hey, what are you doing that, and make a few recommendations, so, I mean, can we give them the permission to put the bid spec together and get it all ready? Is that a spec that could be looked at, just have it available for a week or two or whatever before you go out to bid? So any comments could be made by the board? Not that we know what to say, at least we could look at it, maybe you do.
Is there a 90, you know, like a 90% done with the specs that you might be able to circulate?
Yeah.
Before you put the final, and that way, it'll, you'll see most of what you're going to see. They're still going to be doing refinements, but there'll be a little wiggle room for you to make any kind of comments.
Well, just like the discussion of, of the generators, we needed to talk about that, and we would have given. I see this architectural having a, not a say, an overview of this before, before we do it. And what we pay them for.
So, I mean, are you, are you okay with that, to get the, give them direction to put the bits back together?
Oh, I'm good with that, yeah.
And then just let us look at it first before...
Saying we chew too much, but that, but that's, I, I, for informational, yeah, but I tried to give my thoughts and questions earlier.
I think you're all right on that, Ann, but to me, you know, the discussion about the architectural committee even looking at it, they haven't even looked at it, right? And to me, that's kind of troubling, because I don't even know materially contemplating, so since I don't know what the bid spec is, I don't know what level of detail it goes to. I don't know if you guys are going to Menards and saying we need to buy lumber, or if you're looking at windows and shutters and all that stuff, right?
Yeah, we've been working with the, the working group, core planning group, you know, and the development of the project. We have, you know, we have substantially prepared the documents to be in a position where you're authorizing it to potentially going out to bid, so they are in a 99%, you know, condition already that I think has, that has suggested we share those with our...
We have a couple of people who are, you know, people that don't work for us or whatever.
No, absolutely, but I wouldn't debate that for a moment.
Okay, so, how do we...
What can we do tonight?
Tonight, can we get the, give them the approval to do the bits back, and is there anything that, was it asphalt shingles? Is that the only thing that we have to worry about?
Well, no.
That's the point, right?
The recommendation from the group was that, you know, they didn't heat value, they didn't pursue those other items.
Okay, the generator pad and everything else left out, so these, but you have these values, they threw these value engineering things in here, right? So, do we need to make any decisions tonight?
So the asphalt shingles say $22,000.
Okay.
All right, that's $22,000 for money around, so I think having the cedar shakes is worth $22,000. That's us. If everybody wants asphalt shingles, we're not going to argue.
So are we replacing a newer roof with a new roof? Do you know, do you know, do we know? This is bad roof.
Had leak issues, so it's our understanding.
See, I don't know, that's why I'm...
Well, that's what they said was leaked, but that roof was just replaced.
I think this is an interesting process, because I feel that we've had so much turnover on staff.
Yeah.
We don't know what we don't know.
Right.
So, and that's no malignment to our current staff. It's like, we just don't know.
Right.
I think...
Cedar shakes made within the last year.
John Marshall, isn't he?
We just did. I mean, we just, that roof was just replaced.
Yeah.
Skylights were redone and stuff like that, so it's pretty new.
And John Marshall, isn't he?
Yeah.
So, that's a great impression to have. I would suggest that if that is the case, then you have a new asphalt shingle roof on at least some portion of this building. Or, I'm sorry, you have a new cedar shake roof on at least some portion of this building. This section that we're in now, the roof line is going to be continuous.
I see.
To the addition, and so you were going to have two roofs that are coming in the same plane together, so they, they are never going to match up, so, and I would say our, our recommendation would be at least for this portion of the building to blend it in with the addition.
Okay.
We can certainly look at maintaining the existing roof on the other portion of the building.
Okay.
I wonder if that does not then suggest that you want to match, so not doing asphalt shingle on one part and having cedar shake on the other part, which you want it all to be...
I think that's what we need to know when next time we need.
Yeah, I, I do not want to pay $2 million for Mr. Potato Head.
Correct, again, why, the direction we were headed. No, to make sure that it was all concrete.
Right, it makes perfect sense. It makes perfect sense, yeah, but we, you know, it's a valid question, because we don't, we don't know.
It sounds like it's, it's option A with the windows on the doors, the, I don't know what to call this baby milking space. I don't know what to call it. Generator as an alternate, and double-check the need for roof changes.
I believe it's called lactation room.
Thank you.
And if you want to know what things look like, go to the December, I'm sorry, September 26th, Board Deck, 0926, and you'll see all these kinds of things, it shows all different materials, and the roof line, and all the layouts, well, now we have an option A, so that'll change.
So you want to repeat that again?
A lot of stuff here, and we, you know, we talked about this in prior meetings.
So you want to repeat, you want to repeat that again, just to make sure, I mean, are we all giving them direction?
Yeah, I'm going to, yeah, they're going to approve option A with the additions of windows on the door, the lactation space, the generator is an alternative, and double-check the need for roof changes. And go out to bid, provided that the board gets you two weeks to look at the plans and come back to you with any questions, informational. So that way, we don't have to come back to say, now you can go out to bid. We're giving you the bid thing as long as you give the board two weeks.
And, and can we also, can you meet or have the AC look at it? I mean, is it the whole AC, Gene, or is it just yourself?
I'm always happy to look at anything. I would love to look at this. I, procedurally, I don't know if, at some point, I would imagine that the whole plan would have to go.
No, so, no, it does not, right, Vic? It's not, but...
Why is that? I'm just curious.
It's not, it's not considered downtown?
Isn't this, isn't this B1? And look at the zoning map today, there is like a little bit of a stretch.
This is R2.
You'll pull up the zoning map? But, but I mean, at a minimum, just render your opinion, would you be mine, did you, were you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm good, I...
All right. You can share with the whole AC if we, you know, even if it doesn't go before then.
Dana? I think we're, they're shifting it from having just, she look at it.
No, no, they're not going to make a decision. They're not going to, they're just to advise them, right? That's what you're doing.
They're not taking any action.
They're not taking any action, so they can provide any feedback, too.
This is delayed by two weeks, or is it the same difference? This is a two-week delay already?
This is an R1 district lot.
And Dana, what's the, what's the notice that we need for the AC meeting that's going to be on Monday? When does that, if we add that to the agenda?
Doesn't have to be in the agenda.
It doesn't have to, it's, it's, it's an informal review.
Gotcha.
But I think the importance is to try to get the feedback in case there's some benefit that we can enhance the...
Correct, that sounds good. Yeah, are you, and you okay with that?
I'm all, yeah, I'm really good. Thank you for that consideration.
So the, we, we are setting this back by two weeks.
Are we setting, necessarily setting it back? Because are you ready to, with the spec already? The spec done?
We're ready to share it with you.
Okay.
We'll have the two-week period to review it.
Perfect.
And I would, under, under the understanding that we would delay putting it out to bid until we have received any feedback.
Right.
That we can incorporate changes.
Right, so all two weeks.
Will that push the whole schedule out two weeks?
Yeah, are we willing to suck up two weeks because of this? I mean, two weeks, two weeks seems like a long time to me.
Ten days, 10 working days?
Well, let's, let's, keep it perspective, we've got a holiday next week, or next week, so I'm guessing that what we're calling two weeks, you'll have a hard time in getting, I mean, you won't have people's full attention next week, probably, so...
Our next board meeting is in 12 days.
You can send us a link, you can send us a link that we, I can send that link out to the board members, and they can get back with you within 14 days.
You want consolidated, or you want...
Could we shorten it up?
By the next board meeting, 12 days.
12 days.
Do we need that? Do we need that? You know, do we?
The 28th?
I'm asking what, what...
What's the purpose of it?
You're not taking any action there.
Yeah, we're not taking any action anyway.
Yeah, it'll, it'll appear that you are, you're willing to take some action on the 20th, and you're not, so I would divorce the 28th from this. It's just two weeks after you, after you send it to me and I send it out to everybody, the link, the board has two weeks to get comments to you, and you can incorporate whatever.
Right, and so...
And if you have any questions, you can come back to the committee, and if the committee still has questions, we can go back to the entire board with some questions individually, and, or, my school was right.
Dan's got it.
Putting my construction hat on, always trying to save time, you will have the opportunity to value-engineer way that one's going out to bid, yeah?
No, not in the public sector.
Oh, never mind, that's why we don't do public, that's why I ask, never mind.
It's not as if we're doing the $5,000 change order. It's not as if we're doing this fifty thousand dollar change order. It's a big deal. Oh, let's do it right.
Let's give us the, the two weeks. All right.
Move to adjourn.
So, so you're all good with that? No, hold on a second, hold on a second. All right, so we're moving on, we're good, right? We're good?
Live motion.
Even if it's a few days last, it doesn't matter at this point. All right, so just, President Trustee reports, I did the mayor's.
We didn't, we actually didn't have the vote on the direction, so let's.
All right, let's take a, a motion to, as, to go out to bid as described by Art. The village manager, and with the two-week period of time to review the plans, I think that's what it is, right? And so who wants to make a motion? Moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Tanucci. Call.
Trustee O'Reilly. Trustee Tanucci. Trustee Grofsky.
Hi.
Trustee Kitzbergmeyer.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
All right, motion carries.
Now you're on.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So just, I, this morning, I did the Lake Circle Chamber Mayor's Breakfast. That's what I did, that's my report. Any other reports?
Quickly, I'm really proud of this. I'm actually really proud of this. When I got here, the first audit said we didn't have policies and procedures, and we've never had a management discussion. We're going to, we fixed the policies like four years ago, and we're going to have our first management discussion. So next time, we have the audit.
I thought it was my turn.
Thank you for that report, do you have a report?
I missed the Swaco meeting tonight because we're out of the regular meeting schedule, so nothing.
All right, thanks for telling me that. Trustee, trustee Kitzbergmeyer.
Anytime, anyone.
Trustee O'Connor? trustee O'Reilly?
I thought we can move forward on, you know, still in the, yeah.
So you'll have that at the next meeting? I hope so. Trustee Tanucci?
Which is really unfortunate, because we're just working on the curve today.
Hey, move to adjourn.
All right, so, manager, any, or, ask me if you have any questions, let me know. All right, adjourn, moved by trustee Barowski.
Seconded by.
Seconded by trustee Kitzbergmeyer, all in favor?
All right.
All right, meeting adjourned, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take some pizza home, buddy.